I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for our work session. And I will start by asking the councilors if you have any items after reviewing the agenda and items on consent that you want to bring up. Seeing none, are there any councilor concerns at this point? We will start our pre-council work session with the 2024 League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities for the LOC ballot and also for the 2025 legislative session.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald, members of the Wilsonville City Council. My name is Mark Ottenhead. I'm the Public and Government Affairs Director for the city. And with us tonight is...
Greg Leo with the Leo Company, your government and affairs council.
Very good. Tonight we'll be discussing the 2024 League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities ballot for the 2025-26 legislative session. In each even-numbered year, LOC appoints members to serve on policy committees to analyze issues and recommend positions for LOC to take in the upcoming legislative cycle. This year, there were 23 total policy positions for consideration. Two years ago, there were 28. And the cities are to provide our input on the top five of these 23 policies to the LOC Board of Directors by the end of September. And there are many good policy options to select from, but not all issues necessarily apply to the city of Wilsonville.
The materials that you'll see tonight really are a composite of many different documents on how we got here. Prior City Council adopted state legislative agendas. City Council adopted legislative priorities. Your discussions over the years and a staff review of the current and pending legislative issues.
This is a summary of the 23 issues that we were asked to vote on. We will not cover all of these right now because that would take quite a bit of time. So instead, what we will do is focus on the top five priorities.
Priority number one, the Community and Economic Development Recommendation for Infrastructure Funding. So infrastructure, of course, is very important to our city. Getting some help from the state to have additional money for infrastructure is our top priority, our top recommended priority.
And this would include, in our thinking, both residential development as well as industrial development. A second priority, and again, these are not in order, they're just in, they're not in priority order, they're just in the order that LOC ballot contains them. Our second one came from the Community and Economic Development Committee, and that was shelter and homeless response. And this both encompasses support for homeless programs, provide shelter, but also to provide cities with greater leeway so that when we make findings that are reasonable, that those findings will stand up in court and resist a challenge. And we got this from our city attorney.
Priority number three is the restoration of recreational immunity. This will be a familiar issue to you. The short session temporarily extended recreational immunity, but it will come back during the 2025 session. League of Oregon Cities has taken a strong position on this, and it does affect very much how our parks and other city facilities are exposed to tort liability.
And this issue has also been on our city priority list for the last year, and we propose again this year, only because, as Greg noted, the immunity that the legislature gave us expires at the end of this year, excuse me, '25, end of '25. Priority number four is from the Transportation Committee, and this pertains to the proposed 2025 transportation funding package. This is probably the most anticipated session issue. It's been telegraphed for quite a while. The Joint Committee on Transportation is now touring the entire state of Oregon, hearing from all quadrants of the state regarding what issues are to local governments and communities in terms of transportation funding. We will actually, we have requested that Mayor Fitzgerald and Smart Transit Director Dwight Boucher be able to present at the September 26 hearing in Happy Valley. We have not heard back on a confirmation yet. However, as we know, transportation funding has been a major component for the city, for both in terms of roads but also transit.
This will likely be one of the biggest or the biggest issue before the 2025 legislature. We can't tell you the details of what this omnibus package will have until they finish their transportation roadshow. But very soon, the details will start to emerge about how we will pay for and plan Oregon's transportation system in the future.
Yeah, in essence, ODOT is on a funding cliff, over a billion dollars short each biennium, and is going to come to a point where even doing maintenance will become difficult. So the issue's been between inflation and the cost of construction escalating so high, coupled with increasingly fuel-efficient vehicles, there just is not enough funds to maintain and build new capacity. And priority five is from the Water and Wastewater Committee. And this is kind of an odd one, but operator and training apprenticeships. Our Public Works Department has brought this to our staff meetings a few times, that finding trained operators is very difficult and can impact a city's ability to deliver infrastructure. And since infrastructure funding is important, having water and wastewater operators is key to enable development of residential or industrial properties.
So the path forward here is your decision tonight would be forwarded to the League of Oregon Cities by Friday is our deadline. About half of the cities now have already responded. And then they'll be considered at the League of Oregon Cities meeting in Bend for approval, and that will form the legislative agenda for all of the cities that are involved with the league.
And we did propose in our staff report to, League of Oregon City provides a write-in, and that we would write in it noting that we believe that employment land readiness and availability and full funding and alignment for housing production are considered as components of infrastructure funding, just to make that clear, and to note that funding and expanding public and inter-community transit should be included in the 25 transportation package priorities. So LOC had listed these as separate items. We're suggesting that really they're subcategories of the larger category noted. In essence, these are the five priorities that staff are proposing for council's consideration along with a priorities note that we just observed. And we would welcome any feedback, comments, and direction.
So councilors, I'd like to hear from you on any other priorities or comments on these as well as the write-ins. Councilor Linville?
Thank you for your presentation and report. I thought it might be helpful for myself to, just off the top of my head, select my top five before I read LOC's explanations and before I looked at the staff priorities. And I want you to know that they were all common to yours, except I put the employment lands readiness and availability in the five and the funding and expanding public and inter-community transit. But I also put in the shift from the gas tax to the road user fee. And when you talked about the transportation and those subcategories as well, I think this is one as well that is probably rolled into those as maybe just a funding mechanism. And I, so I was pleased when I then got through the report and found that, you know, mine were as well listed in yours. So I think, I think that that was helpful for me as an exercise. I just want to make one comment, and this is mostly to our public, and that is that we sometimes, I think, think that this is just a perfunctory kind of exercise to go through and don't, and I hope our community really realizes that when we establish these legislative priorities, that this is what we are saying as a city are the legislative, the important legislative issues and things that we are mostly concerned about. So when we talk about infrastructure funding, that and that being number one, that was my number one as well. And I think that we can't emphasize enough that we just simply don't have the kind of resources that we need to provide the infrastructure that our city needs. And so while we might prioritize or disagree about priorities in other venues, these are really important and should be seen, I think, by our public as, as being important priorities. So, so thank you for your work. And I think adding those two at the, at the end, it's unfortunate that we only get five, but I would agree that they, they're important enough to put as addendums. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Berry?
Yeah, so I also agree, like, I like the ones that you pointed out, the infrastructure. We keep talking about how important that is over for Frog Pond and up in the industrial area, up in the northwest section. So that's really, should be a priority. And then, of course, the homeless. For me, the recreation immunity is also really important, especially after attending the skate jam with the new mural and seeing all that hard concrete, you know, that we just need to protect ourselves and, and on the trails. So I like what you picked out. The operator in training for the wastewater and water treatment plants, that, you know, I hadn't really thought about that, but that is really important. And we, you know, we talk about mentoring people into the workplace so that that kind of falls into that discussions that we've had in the past. So thank you.
Go ahead. I appreciate your recommendations, so thank you for the presentation and the analysis and work you've done. I'm curious, I feel like I remember in the past that we've kind of tried this approach of a little bit of a two-for-one by writing in the comment that really we feel these two things are related. Has that, has that worked out in the past? I just, I want to see if, how secure we feel about that, because these are all very important items. It's hard to whittle it down to five.
It's been noted, and LOC, because there are 240-some-odd cities and 100 that vote probably, they've chosen occasionally just other items. For example, like the marijuana tax issue, which is not relevant to Wilsonville because we don't authorize cannabis sales or to collect that tax. So there have been some things in the past where LOC has diverged from us, but others where we have been in a complete alignment. And I will guess that a number of these, particularly around transportation and infrastructure, will be pretty universal.
So I'm kind of thinking, when I was reading through the list, to thinking about, you know, the lens of what's, what's key and core to Wilsonville, but also what items on this list are quite popular and will be picked by other cities and will inevitably end up being something that's addressed? Where maybe something that we see as being important, but it might not be as popular on the ranks, do we need to make sure that we get a vote to, to that item as well? And my, my sense on this could be wrong, but like, for instance, the operator and training apprenticeship program, I, I see that as being very important, but perhaps not a popular one among all cities. So I think that is a good place for us to use a vote to make sure that that gets some attention. Where the restoration of recreational immunity, I would think that has to, that has to be, you know, people are going to be doing work on that. It has to happen, right? So if we find areas that we need to take a vote away, I would feel more secure, you know, that this will be addressed regardless, kind of a thing. Just, just some of my perception on this. And I, another one that I think was very important is the employment lands readiness and availability. And so I felt a little nervous that we have that as an asterisk to the infrastructure funding. I do definitely see the relation in there, but if we are concerned that that strategy won't work out for us, I, I would be willing to put a vote there and perhaps take off recreational immunity, knowing that, or truly believing, I guess, not knowing, but truly believing that that is something that would be addressed just because it's going to expire and everyone's concerned about it. So, I don't know. That was interesting to hear. I'd be interested to hear your feedback or your thoughts on that.
Mayor Fitzgerald, Councilor Oquervall, that's all good points. In fact, recreational immunity and employment lands readiness are actually later on in our meeting on our proposed city priorities, legislative priorities for 2025. So indeed, there's many ways that this could be shaped.
And I would just add, Councilor Oquervall and Mayor, that this is the beginning of a process, and as we are meeting with the league, you're talking with other elected league members at the conference in Bend and other places, then we can exert some influence. Also, my first league lobby meeting is next Monday. The lobbyists talk to each other, and we look for opportunities to promote the nuance. So that's why getting guidance from you tonight is super important to us, so that we know in all the many ways that we can influence legislation as it moves through the process. This is a beginning.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. I wanted to, and thank you for that good statistical insight as well. I think that makes a really good point from our data analyst PhD candidate. Really appreciate that way of looking at it, because we want to get as much power behind the most important things as possible. So I agree on the infrastructure funding, obviously, and that they've set, they have set that up as one by itself. And so I completely agree with Councilor Oquervall that we should consider putting a vote, I'd like to put a vote by the employment lands readiness and availability. I just had a meeting today with the Washington County Coordinating Committee, and there was a report from Metro that sounded very similar to what we discuss here in that across this region, there are mostly just small parcels of land, and it makes Oregon miss out on some, the metropolitan area, miss out on some investments that could come our way. And we've said this, so I'm very keen on the employment lands. But I have two points that are similar to your write-in, combining things. One is on the shelter and homelessness response, which I think is really important. I'd like to ask them to include the behavioral health enhancements with that. Let's not forget to do that. Okay, so we've got agreement. Yeah, I'd like to have that as a write-in. And in fact, at a meeting of the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, they were talking about doing something similar in the transportation realm. So in, and I agree, in the transportation package, I would like to see where we say shift from a gas tax to a road user fee. Add that it, any, any road user fees should be indexed for inflation. So we have that baked in from the beginning?
Mayor, if I could just quickly address that. In the roadshow, where we've heard input from all over the state, that is one of the points most people agree on, that indexing is the great way to...
So we don't start falling behind immediately and having another crisis.
It's kind of how we got here, by not, yeah.
And, and basically, in the transportation package, that just says transportation package, but I think we should add that it is a top priority to have a department of transportation that has enough funding and predictable funding to operate effectively and predictably and to manage the capital projects and maintenance of the major facilities. And I think I agreed, you know, you're getting a lot of comments here. I guess you have to do the analysis.
So about last comment, are you saying more funding to the Department of Transportation?
Yes, when they say the 2025 transportation package, that is going to be, according to the meeting I went to today, I guess you would know more going to all these meetings, but it was a representative from the LOC, actually, saying that he predicted that the only tax package to be brought into the legislative discussion in this session will be transportation.
I believe that, Mayor, I believe that to be correct.
Okay.
Yeah, no doubt that's from Jim McCauley, the LOC's legislative director, who handles transportation for the league. And leadership has pretty much said this, so.
And so I kind of drew a circle, actually, around those three. The 2025, 2025 transportation package, it should include funding and expanding public and inter-community transit, and it should include shifting from a gas tax to a road user fee that's indexed for inflation. Why would you leave those out? And yours, that's what you were after.
If I may then, in a nutshell, I think then what we heard was, at this point, overall support for the proposed priorities, but to note in that notes section also to include item 20 in relation to the transportation package, and also in regards to shelter and homeless, to include item number six as a, as a component of that.
Yes.
I'd like to add one more thing to that, because the continued addiction policy reform sort of weaves itself into the same, into the same topic. And you hate to get too far off base of what you're trying to do here, but there's, they're all woven together, unfortunately, in many, many cases.
We will have a long notes section.
Also, we, with transportation, I think we want to make sure that we maintain the current shared revenue formula, and that's been something that cities have been very strong in supporting. That's the 50-30-20, you know, formula, because it's a transportation system. It's not just state highways, it's county roads and city streets, so.
Could you, just for our discussion and audience, describe that a little bit?
This is the way that the state of Oregon would share transportation revenues with counties and cities. And so early on in the conversation, it was, well, one way we could, you know, help the state's budget shortfall is to change the formula, take money away from counties and cities in order to, you know, put it against the state's shortfall. But consistently throughout all of the roadshow meetings, local government has stepped up and said, no, let's, let's not do that. Let's support the entire transportation system.
Because we need to keep those streets up.
And you're talking about gas tax revenue?
Correct, yes.
Wouldn't that formula go forward with the new, if, if the road tax was adopted, then would also apply that formula, right?
Yes, that, that's how the money would be allocated, I'm sorry, Councilor Berry, Mayor, that's the way that it would be allocated, but not, what they're talking about is how it's collected. So what is the method by which we're going to collect enough revenue and then use that same allocation principle?
Thank you.
Very good.
Very good. Let me switch presentations here now?
Okay.
There it is. Okay, very good. Our next item now is consideration of the joint values and outcomes for the 2025 state legislation, legislative transportation package by the communities of Clackamas County.
So this has come out of 4C, I believe, and basically, there are principles that they would ask us to support in the transportation conversation.
And the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, also known as C4, is composed of voting jurisdictions that include the county, the cities, special districts, citizen planning organizations, and hamlets. We also have non-voting or ex officio members that include MPAC rep, Metro Council rep, Port of Portland, rural transit, and urban transit, of which Smart Transit Director Dwight Boucher trades with TRIMET as the urban transit rep at C4 meetings. Wilsonville participates in C4 in various ways. Mayor Fitzgerald is our rep, City Council rep, and Councilor Berry is the alternate. Again, our Smart Transit Director Dwight Boucher represents urban transit, alternating with TRIMET. And our city engineer Zach Wagel is the city rep to CTEC, the Transportation Advisory Committee, to C4. We also participate in the metro subcommittee of C4, where Council Berry is the rep, Mayor Fitzgerald is the alternate, and again, Dwight Boucher participates as an urban transit In June, C4 held a two-day retreat that included a question-answer session with the co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Transportation, namely Senator Gorsuch from Gresham and Representative McLean from Hillsborough. Both Mayor Fitzgerald and Councilor Berry attended the retreat and participated in the drafting of the Joint Values and Outcomes Statement. At the August C4 meeting, the statement was approved by you C4 unanimously, and the request was to have all C4 jurisdictions basically adopt or bless this document. And the county was particularly anxious to have this happen by the September 26 hearing in Happy Valley by the Joint Committee on Transportation. The, the Joint Values and Outcomes Statement is, I have it quoted here, it gets quite lengthy. I'm not sure if it's, if I should read it all, I'm kind of thinking not. But basically, it's kind of, and we want you to notice, they say, these values were not an endorsement of any particular funding proposal. So they wanted to make sure that this was focused on values. What are the outcomes of what this transportation package should do, but does not focus on how to go about doing it? Who pays? And so basically, it goes over points about ensuring an equitable, balanced, and seamless transportation system, to ensure maximum efficient utilization of public funds for the transportation package, to advance projects that build public trust and accountability. And they specifically call out the House Bill 2017 mega projects and House Bill 3055. And House Bill 3055 is the one that named the I-5 Boone Bridge Project as one of the top four Portland mega highway projects. To provide accessibility and funding to multimodal facilities and services. And so this talks about bike ped facilities and transit. To provide accessibility and funding, oh, that's the same one as last one, sorry about that. I see more points. To support housing production and economic opportunities. And in a nutshell, that's the, the Joint Values and Outcomes Statement. And we're happy to answer any questions, or perhaps if the Mayor or Councilor Berry wish to add anything, we'd welcome that too. Thank you.
That's a big bucket of hopefulness.
Yes.
It feels very aspirational. Are there any, when does it go from aspirational to actionable?
This will probably be it, and then, once we get into the sausage grinding at the legislative session, what will guide us are these values and outcomes. Does this proposal help the values and outcomes that have been articulated?
So I've spoken to two members of the Joint Transportation Committee this week and said, well, where's the consensus on the committee? How would you like to raise the money? And we're not, we're not getting any specifics at this time. So that's why a general statement of what the goal is is helpful, but we won't be able to know the specifics probably until after the Happy Valley meeting or likely even later, so.
You'll keep us updated, or will it be to the C4 team?
It'll be a bit of both.
Okay. And so just to tag on that again, when different, you know, farther down the road, when the legislature is in session and bills are introduced and things are moving very fast, that would be a guide point. a guide point for county staff or individual city councilors and mayors, county commissioners to act on those.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, Mayor.
Or decide when there's, you know, should this idea be promoted, or should we rise up against it?
Mayor, if I may also point out, this will be an omnibus bill, so we have experience with these where, you know, these are two 300-page bills and, you know, the 175th page in the third paragraph, you'll find something you don't like, but you have other things in the bill that you might like. And so that's why it's so important to pay attention to the details of what's in the transportation bill.
I'd just like to add, I think it's really important that the cities and the agencies within Clackamas County come together and put together a value statement, because when we come to decision-making and stuff, then we're not really fighting and opposing one another, that we have a unified, you know, pretty much unified voice to talk with our state legislators and try to get money for projects that are really important to the cities and everybody within Clackamas County. So I thought it was time well spent.
So it looks like we're okay with that.
Very good, thank you.
As soon as we know more, we'll certainly let you know.
One more here. Oh, did I do the right one? I think I.
Okay.
I didn't get the right, the right screen there, sorry about that. Okay. This is our final item. This is the City of Wilsonville and Smart South Metro Area Regional Transit Proposed 2025 State Legislative Session Priorities.
So the priorities that are laid out give us general guidance, which is so important because in, when we're in the building in Salem, there will be issues that come up that we've not anticipated, or we didn't know they'd come up in that form. So having this kind of document really does give us certainty and guidance to make sure that we are representing, we're truly representing what this council wants.
The legislative session priorities are generally, they're specific, timely, topical issues relevant to our city and Smart, and they're major issues for which the city council does seek to express a policy preference. And these are issues that are often outside of council-adopted comprehensive plan, master plans, or strategies. And our Wilsonville state legislators have requested our city priorities this month. Bill drafts are due by September 27 to legislative council.
So you can see here, this complements our general policymaking, as previously stated, both in earlier legislative agendas and in the comprehensive plan. So this is consistent over time. That's why some of these issues may seem very familiar. In this case, consistency is a virtue.
The priorities are there, we've proposed essentially seven priorities. Increased road and public transportation resources with a 2025 transportation funding package that advances the I-5 Boone Bridge and seismic improvement project with the French Prairie Bike Ped Facility, and implements the West Commuter Rail Wilsonville to Salem Extension Study. Also, a Smart Transit Service Territory Alignment with City of Wilsonville Boundaries and Adjustment of TriMet District Territory. A third item is to restore permanent recreational immunity for public use of trails. We also propose creating a $2 billion state residential housing infrastructure fund. And in our priorities, we include five potential legislative grant requests for city infrastructure projects. We also propose funding the Business Organ Regionally Significant Industrial Sites Program to extend the sunset on Vertical Housing Development Zones Incentive Program, and to improve childcare resources to benefit families, workers, and employers. And number eight, to modify homeless camping laws and increase support for affordable housing and rising utility costs. And I will note that the items with asterisks are ones that have appeared on our prior 24 legislative priorities also. Some of these, the legislature, for example, recreational immunity, they gave us a temporary fix, but not a permanent one. So a number of these items are still in play because they have not been resolved.
The transportation priority, of course, is an omnibus bill, which will be dealing with all aspects of transportation, but everything we think about every day is about the Boone Bridge and getting it funded for replacement. Make sure that we have adequate money to do seismic improvements, and of course, the bike ped bridge, which we'll hear about at the open house on Wednesday. So all of this has been work that's been ongoing for very much time. The West Commuter Rail Study, we will pursue that again in the context of this bill, but not with a standalone bill. I think in this particular case, there's the opportunity, omnibus bill, to get study of the potential of having Wes go to Salem.
And we will note that the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium is also considering endorsing this also as part of their transportation plaque, plank for the West Commuter Rail Extension Study.
When I think about that, the French Prairie Bike Ped Facility, I understand why it's being included, and I understand that there's a certain amount of support behind it, but I look at the criticalness of the I-5 Boone Bridge and Seismic Improvement and the West Commuter Rail. Those are really future, very transportation-for-all focused. The French Prairie Bike Ped Facility kind of feels like an, oh, by the way, we're going to throw this one in here too. I understand that it's important to a lot of people, but I question whether or not it diminishes the value of the other two.
Mayor Fitzgerald, Councilor Dunwell, the answer is no, not really. In fact, it strengthens that ODOT has to do something with the bike ped facility. They have come to recognize that when they do highway improvements for cars, there's other forms of transportation they need to accommodate. So right now, our choices are either an on-highway sidewalk or the French Prairie Bridge. And we think more people would prefer the bridge. In fact, when ODOT did the open house here last November on the I-5 Boone Bridge, over two-thirds of respondents indicated a preference for the French Prairie Bike Ped Bridge rather than walking on the highway bridge.
I have a question on that. So on the French Prairie Bike and pedestrian facility, would that include room for emergency vehicles also?
That is a, ODOT is currently studying that. So Zach Wagel and Dwight Boucher and I have been participating in a series of ODOT meetings with state and federal agencies on what's called the Pell Process and the CFAC Process. And they are looking at value engineering the French Prairie Bridge to see if they could reduce the cost. The primary component for cost reduction would be the south ramp that curves around. If it does not have to accommodate a full-length fire engine or a tow truck with a semi, then they think they can reduce the amount of acquisition for right-of-way and the construction costs. So they are looking at that entire project. It may not have that same emergency services component because they believe that the Boone Bridge will be seismically resilient.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dunwell. Okay. Are you ready? It might draw away from the French Prairie Bridge, so.
If there's any other follow-up questions there.
I do have one more there.
Go for it, yeah.
Before we leave that. So I just wanted to ask, or just bring up the fact that for many years, this request for the French Prairie Bridge came from the residents of the Wilsonville area and others and people involved in, it originated there, and people involved in wanting to have a tourism option. You could have bike tours as you do in Europe, going from Newburgh all the way up through the wine country, across the bridge, be an economic development focus, and you can read all about this in prior, I think it might still be on a website. But things changed not that long ago, when in fact, as you said, separate from that effort, ODOT did find that it pretty much, I think, has to do this.
Correct.
So that was just a sort of like parallel thing that came along, and there it is.
Great context. I think putting it in context is really important for us as we understand that and make sure that, that I don't, and I know you can't put that in the priorities themselves, but to speak to the why there's a necessity to bind the two together.
Sorry, that button is so far away. And one other thing about the Boone Bridge, since we're on this, and we have our open house that ODOT is putting on in our facility, but they're putting on the open house on the 18th, and when I read the handout for that and looked on the Boone Bridge project on the website, it does, none of this is absolutely certain yet either. So they have to get money. So it's just like where it is in a priority, but money has to be found. And I read that, and I appreciate that you put in the materials here that City of Wilsonville will need to advocate for that funding.
Yes, indeed, Mayor, that's correct.
So I think we covered that. Onto Councilor Alkrevall.
I think it's a good list. My question is, how, like granular do we get with the list? Because some of these topics include, you know, probably many sub-bullets. And if we included them all, it would be hard, you know, like we'd be cluttering things up and it would lose some of its impact. I was wondering about this, this priority one, with the transportation funding package and reflecting back to some of the past work that our mayor has done about tolling and information provided about concerns that if a tolling program would divide our city and concerns around equity of different tolling programs and things like this as well. Is that something that needs to be called out specifically, or are we going too deep into little, I mean, it's not little items, but you know what I mean? We're not, we're not having that same level of coverage for every single one of these bullets. However, there is time that we provide testimony, we provide comment on things that is kind of a sub-piece of what we have in our legislative agenda.
Councilor Alkrevall, Mayor, it's always good to have clear policy as we go into, you know, the process of advocating. It will get down to the granular level. You know, there will be need for additional revenue, so how that revenue is going to be generated is not yet clear. We don't know if tolling is truly on the table or not. From all we hear, there's some variant of vehicle miles traveled that might be considered, but we frankly don't know at this time. So it's hard to, you know, make a granular policy at this time. What's, what I like about this particular approach is it gives us a general guidance that we then can work with and then come back to you once there's clarity about the specifics. So I can't tell you if tolling is on the table. I would hope it's not, but it may well be because there is a big revenue cliff that the legislature is going to need to address.
There certainly will be most likely tolling for the interstate bridge replacement project that seems to be agreed, even though the session hasn't begun, both states are talking, Washington and Oregon are talking about that. My sense is that the legislature got burned enough by the tolling conversation that they're going to stay away from that for now is my sense, though as Greg indicates, we really don't know yet. But I'm thinking, we had a meeting from the Oregon Transportation Forum recently where they showed, for example, Texas has like 24 different sources of funds for roads, and in Oregon, we have like three or something, three or four. So it showed that there were many ways to Gordon Ox or to get revenue from various different sources incrementally, even being vehicle registration fees and.
Increasing the gas tax.
Yeah, indexing that.
Certain service fees at DMV, tolling all of the interstate bridges, including the Meagler Bridge, the Rainier Bridge, et cetera. I mean, there are a number of different ways, but does, do all those revenue sources add up enough to, you know, meet the un-financed need? And so that's the question, or does there need to be a revenue component that is so, you know, strong that we're able to really meet the need? And that's where the vehicle miles traveled aspect comes in, which really is similar to what we do with the gas tax. We think about since 1919, we've had the gas tax where it's kind of a pay-as-you-go model. That's what the VMP discussion is about. The difficulty of not getting the granular details is how much the collection costs were, because as the governor said in her statement, 40% of the revenue would go to the collection costs under the last tolling plan. Well, that doesn't really work from a, how do you adequately pay for these services? So that's kind of where the discussion is right now, and that's why, as I've been talking to members, what do you think? And they're kind of saying, well, maybe some form of vehicle miles traveled, but we are quite unclear about the details, so.
And I will note, in all of our previous communications, we have consistently requested an exemption for Charbonneau and Wilsonville because we are dependent upon I-5 as local access to a component of our city, as is the businesses that serve that and the families who visit back and forth. So we have consistently maintained a request for an exemption of tolling for Wilsonville residents and businesses.
And that would be in the form of letters of testimony and people going down and testifying when that moment arrives.
Exactly.
You know, one, one other thing I just wanted to add is we want to make sure that maybe with Clackamas County or LOC, but we advocate for an equitable vehicle miles traveled for hybrid cars and electric cars.
Yes.
To catch up with the other cars.
Mayor, I will point out that their, that electric vehicles are not paying their fair share at this point, except for in the model program that they've rolled out. So one of the principles that's talked about is putting gas-powered and electric car vehicles on the same footing in terms of what their true costs are to the system. So that's, that's another area we need to look at. And as long as we're looking at kind of low-hanging fruit, making sure we enforce vehicle registration, there's a lot of cars driving around Oregon today without current tags. ODOT can do a much better job of making sure that people are registering and have current tags.
Priority number two is one that we made a run at two years ago during the regular session, and that's a Smart Transit Service Territory Alignment with the City of Wilsonville Boundaries, which requires an adjustment of the TriMet District Territory. As I noted in 2023, Representative Neuron and Senator Woods sponsored HB 2666 that would have accomplished this. It was actually scheduled for a hearing before the Joint Committee, and TriMet arranged for the hearing to be canceled. And so we began a series of negotiations with TriMet that didn't really lead anywhere, so we're back to this again. And it raises questions. Is it fair to take the money and provide no service, which TriMet continues to collect transit tax revenues in the City of Wilsonville and adjacent UGB areas, but provides no transit service for the funds received? And also, is it equitable and fair for TriMet to capitalize on Wilsonville's future urban development as a free cash cow while providing no service? And without a modification of the boundary, TriMet will continue to unfriendly reap the transit tax collections for jobs directly created by the investments of the City of Wilsonville and are served by Smart Transit. So it's a basic issue of fairness and equity, and we would love to make a run at it again. Our legislators are, legislators are happy to sponsor the bill again.
And we have a bill that from a previous session that we can pre-session file if this is approved and meet the deadline for getting into legislative council. Restoring. Restoring recreational immunity is, you know, we've talked about how important it is, and legislature passed Senate Bill 1576, but it was only temporary. And so we really are at risk. They have, you know, lawsuits related to the public use of our parks. Working with the League, this is a very important priority. There are a number of other folks who are very concerned about this. And so it will be a big priority for the League. I hope it's a big priority for the city because it seems like this is a threat to our well-being here.
And I just want to add that, of course, maintaining the safest trails and facilities is our first priority so that we don't have to deal with that problem.
The idea of closing our, you know, trails and parks because of this would be very, very difficult for our citizens, I think.
Priority four is our proposal to create a $2 billion state residential housing infrastructure fund. And this is a response to the governor's office setting a target of 36,000 homes to be reduced annually over the next decade and to make them affordable to 80% or less of the median income. The governor's Housing Production Bill, SB 1537, and also SB 1530, provided some appropriations that was total 1.36 billion. However, when we look at it a little more closely, and I should have, I think I miswrote that, that should have been millions. Actually, it was billion, but of the stuff that would help infrastructures to support housing, 94 million went to earmarks statewide in the range of $1 to $3 million each. And these were mainly for water and wastewater-type projects. They were distributed all over the state. I can't say that any single earmark was going to actually generate any housing per se because the earmarks are so small. They did create a $75 million revolving loan program for moderate-income housing financing, but not for infrastructure. And they did create $3 million in direct allocations for housing capacity and support for infrastructure planning. But again, no money to support the building of infrastructure. So the point here is if we're serious about wanting to go into housing production, and for that matter, industrial development, we need some real infrastructure monies and not $3 million each. We have a series of earmark requests, and you'll notice in the packet, they're all $3 million because that currently is the top earmark that is coming from federal or state governments. You can't do a lot with 3 million these days. So, and so in lieu of just asking for earmarks, they really need to set up a program and a fund that could provide low-interest loans, grants, forgivable loans, maybe a combination of the two. But right now, there are no real good infrastructure funds available from the state.
Over time, this point has been made repeatedly in the housing discussion that there really is not enough money at the local level for infrastructure and that for, you know, meeting these housing goals, we are going to have to have more help from the state to do that.
Councilor Linville.
I think one of the things that it would be helpful would be just a very brief discussion back. I know that we've talked about it numerous times in our work sessions, but when we get to the state priorities, when you go back, I think, two slides. Yeah. The governor's office set the target goal, and that was legislated in the Housing Production Bill. I think there's some confusion in our community that Metro is driving the amount of housing and the type of housing that is being done and planned for the City of Wilsonville out into the future. Can you, can you briefly just summarize that Housing Production Bill and the implications for the City of Wilsonville in terms of our, not our council or our city's necessity to build, but in order to meet legislated goals that have been set through, through the bill that, bills that have been passed in the legislature?
Yes, Councilor Linville. This was, of course, Governor Kotex's number-one bill. It established the Housing Production Office, which essentially monitors cities to see if we're able to meet those housing goals. In a way, it created additional regulations, which caused our planning department to, you know, report rather than, you know, actually working on housing. Wilsonville is actually one of the bright spots in that we do build new housing here. We do have land that maybe some other cities don't have. To summarize the bill, there was money that was provided in the bill, but not nearly enough. And it seems like much of that money went to state programs, you know, such as the LCDC and other programs for technical assistance to cities, rather than coming directly to cities to meet the infrastructure needs that we talked about. So in a way, the governor's housing bill, we, we had a lot of questions about it, so many other cities. We were on record during the short session, raising these concerns and saying, if you really want to build housing, you will help us with infrastructure funding. That didn't happen in the bill. What we got was more regulation, the new housing office, not enough money. And then the money spread around so, in such a way that no one city really got the resources to make it work. So this is a work in progress, but it is a problem that can be addressed with additional funding and less regulation. I mean, is, is, I think, generally the consensus that we see.
And to give an example, that, that one program here for the 75 million dollar, there are large restrictions on what a city can do and extreme reporting that must be done also. In fact, homes under this program have to have a fee or a lien placed on the home for up to a 10-year period before it comes onto the tax rolls. So some of these programs, we're not clear how well they're going to be subscribed or used. We will learn more in the 25 session as to what utilization, if any, has been. A couple of these programs actually don't start until 2025 roll out, so.
So I guess one of the things to help, help all of us understand and help our citizens understand is when there are concerns about increasing the number of housing units in the City of Wilsonville, am I correct in stating that we don't necessarily have the option to say, stop, we're not building anything more?
That is correct.
In essence.
Councilor Linville, Mayor, yes, that is correct. We are mandated by the state to address these housing goals.
I will note, Mayor Fitzgerald asked Ethan Stockmar, the DLCD Housing Director at the August C4 meeting, this very question. Wilsonville's doing an excellent job. We've maybe created 25% of all the new housing in the Portland Metro region over the last 20 years. Are all cities going to be treated the same? And basically, the answer is no, is that those who've been lacking in producing housing are going to get higher targets and more energy directed at those cities to produce more. And those who have been producing supposedly won't be leaned on as heavily.
But I would like to, well, I'm going to add to that. What his answer was, my, my question was, would the cities, what is the penalty, first of all, for cities who have not been addressing this? And the first answer was, they will try to provide staffing help so that that city can adjust their code and, and get started, which, which is reasonable. Some of our cities are, have very small staffs, and they just can't get moving on this. So one of the suggestions was, or that we heard, that they would provide some staffing and technical expertise to get them in production. And then I asked, what about the cities who have been working on this and even have been advising, using their staff to help advise on the housing bills to make them more effective? And I, I believe he said they have an equitable approach and they want to do something. So I think we should continue advocating for getting infrastructure money because we are at the edge of the urban growth boundary, unlike cities that are landlocked, and we, we do have opportunity there. But like Sherwood and others, there is a, a need for infrastructure funding, and I hope they come through with that.
Mayor, the, the primary limiting factor is economics and not having enough money. And this is the one thing they can do. And frankly, we've been consistent in our message to the governor and to the legislature on this topic, and we will continue to carry that message with your, you know, at your direction.
And as we know, we recently hosted the Governor's Housing Advisor, and Ethan Stockmar and DLCD Senior Managers on a tour of residential housing development opportunities in Wilsonville, whereupon we emphasized infrastructure. Okay. Oh, let me go back to this for a second. We, Community Development Department has provided us a list with five projects, four of which are truly housing development-related infrastructure for water, sewer, road improvements. Representative Neuron expressed an interest in the Charbonneau pathway, so we added that also. But we'll be asking for each of these for $3 million, even though the need is much greater. And these projects will be summarized on a sheet so as to give the legislators more information about what they are and how they support housing development.
In the way of context, every session, at the end of the session, we have the opportunity to ask our legislators for specific funding for projects. So this will help us do that. So we want to reauthorize and fund the Business Oregon Regionally Significant Industrial Site Program. This program, of course, is very important. It's, you know, slated to sunset December 30, you know, this, this next year. And we basically need this to help us with Coffee and Basalt Creek in order to help build the infrastructure for that. There are 12 regionally significant industrial sites designated and approved, including our Coffee Creek regionally significant industrial area. So this is a legislative provision that we have supported. We were disappointed in that it was not fully funded during the last session, and we hope that it will be reauthorized and funded.
Priority six is to extend the sunset on the Vertical Housing Development Zone Incentive Program. This is a 10-year tax abatement on a portion, up to 80% of improvement value on qualifying mixed-use development. It sunsets January 1, 2026. And of course, the city council has approved two programs, one for the Va Village Center and one for the Town Center. So it appears that the legislature was waiting for 25 session to extend a number of sunsets.
So the improved childcare resources for benefiting as an economic development matter is something that we have had quite a lot of internal discussions on here. And this priority, we think, is very important for our workforce development. It's a multi-phased approach. First, we want to stabilize and increase childcare workforce. And then, secondly, make the childcare more available. There's a lot of discussion about childcare providers and providing opportunities, not just for training, but for making them family-wage jobs for people in childcare. And then the final phase is to cap the family childcare contribution. So all of these come from the recommendations that have been made by our childcare providers, working consistently with Clackamas County's Childcare Consortium. So we think this is important to our economic development and the health of our families here in Wilsonville.
Go ahead.
And priority--
Real quick. I just wanted to mention that I was glad to see that continued on the list. In our most recent community survey, it was also highlighted from feedback from our community that this is still a big concern for community members.
Yes.
Yes.
Including our employers.
Yes. And Matt Lorenz, our Economic Development Manager, has been working with the county, the workforce partners, and employers on this issue. And finally, priority eight is to modify the homeless camping laws and increase support for affordable housing and rising utility costs. And, and this is where the current objectively reasonable standard is really not reason, it's not objective, it's subjective and unworkable. We need to have a rebuttable presumption that regulations are reasonable if the local government has adopted findings as to the reasonableness of the regulations. And we will also note that electric and natural gas rates have increased, where utilities are reporting cutting service to a record number of Oregon customers who are behind on paying their monthly utility bills. So these two items seem to have some relationship to each other. That, in a nutshell, are the proposed eight priorities for the City of Wilsonville and Smart during the 2025 state legislative session.
Thank you. Happy to answer any more questions on this.
Do you have a comment?
I do. Go ahead. First of all, thank you both for making this presentation. I think as we go on into the legislative session every year, the more prepared we are, the more we're aligned on what the messaging is and the clearer it is as far as what our priorities are as a city are critical and that we're not ignored at the state level. You know, I'm continually, continually disappointed that all of the great work that our planning director put in last year on housing was ignored, and the governor went ahead and moved with the regulations that really handcuffed us on some of the housing. But I would appreciate the continued tenacious, tenaciousness on all of your parts to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So councilors, do you have any, or we heard from Councilor Dunwell, does anyone have anything to add that they think is missing or should be removed from this? And I, I wanted to add that we do have a request from our legislative representatives to get these priorities to them. We do not want to be behind the other cities. We need to be right there. So any, any other things to add or any concerns? Well, I think that we're covered on that then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes our work session, and we will reconvene for the regular session at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
You too.
Bye.
Bye.[421.56]
Be a Frog Pond Boundary Setting Committee. And as you might read in those articles, it says that their projections and their studies that they do show a, an increase. There will be a kind of flattening of enrollment for a while, but they are projecting an increase of 500 students in Wilsonville in the next five years because of the Frog Pond area. And they are projecting a decrease, kind of a leveling and probably a decrease in the Westland schools. So they have, they are convening a task force, I believe is the name of it, with Westland parents and community members to look at what that community wants to do because some of their schools are looking like they're going to be smaller than others. Do they want to make changes or not? So you'll be reading more about that. Recently, Councilor Ockerball and I attended, along with some other elected officials and business leaders, the first year anniversary of TWIST Bioscience. And they, we, TWIST expanded from San Francisco to Wilsonville due to the city's Wilsonville Investment Now program. And it incentivizes business to operate in Wilsonville by providing limited duration, partial property tax rebates for qualifying development projects that after they prove that they have created family wage jobs and substantial new asset value. So TWIST was recognized at this meeting and many of the attendees were with the Oregon Bioscience Program and also Greater Portland Inc., Economic Development Interests. But TWIST, just to give a brief recap here, and I encourage you to read their website to learn more because it's not something you hear about every day, but they are a leading global synthetic biology and genomics company. And they're the, they are the first company to participate in this economic development program in Wilsonville. They have invested over $100 million in their Wilsonville facility and they now employ 270 employees with family wage jobs. We also had the Emergency Preparedness Fair this last weekend. It was well-attended. They had a steady flow of people coming for the whole two-hour period. I was not able to go this year, but I heard that it went well. There were many partner agencies there, Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue, Charbonneau Emergency Preparedness Committee, PGE had a table there interacting with people, as did these other groups, the American Red Cross, City of Wilsonville Police, and our Public Works Department, and others. And this year, they used the passport strategy again, where the, you encourage people to go from table to table and interact with the hosts to learn about aspects of what each person, neighborhood, and family member can do to prepare themselves should we have one of these emergencies. They talked about Go Kits and even went so far as to have a special guest whose name is Rough and Ready, and he's showing how he's a disaster preparedness dog to motivate people to get started. And last, last week, the city hosted a public open house for the Beckman Interceptor and Trail Project. This project is to increase the city's sewer capacity to support development of Frog Pond East and South neighborhoods, and it provides access for crews to clean and maintain sewer pipes. It also adds a long-envisioned regional trail length that connects the Frog Pond West Area neighborhoods along Beckman Trail to Memorial Park, so people can walk safely, run, bicycle along the connected trail system. I just wanted to ask you, Mr. Cosgrove, they, anybody who wants to read more about this goes to the website. What do you recommend?
Yeah, there's a project page.
Okay.
In the Community Development Department, and it's got a lot of information on it.
Okay. You can, you probably go to the search bar on the website and type Beckman Interceptor and Trail Project Open House and find all the materials there, or email the city and ask them. Couple of upcoming events. We have the DEI Committee's Hispanic Heritage Month Speaker. And I have so many things on my list, I'm going to share that one with you for your report. I meant to do that earlier, Councilor Ockerball. And so that you don't have to hear me going on too long. We also have on September 18th, an ODOT Open House. And this is going to be here at City Hall. The program is put together by ODOT. It's just at this location. And the subject is the I-5 Boone Bridge Project. And again, you can really find a lot by going to the Boone Bridge Project. Just type that into the ODOT website to get a lot of update material. But ODOT has been conducting both federal and state-required studies that lead up to a final federal and national environmental policy act, which they call a NEPA study, and potential funding for the Boone Bridge Project. In particular, ODOT has had to study the potential impacts of the proposed southbound auxiliary lane as the well, as well as the best alternative transportation facility for the bike-ped access. And I will add that the bike-ped access on the Boone Bridge is an idea that we've heard about in Wilsonville for a long time. There have been people who have wanted this, both in and around Wilsonville and also in the tourism industry. We have not ever found funding for that. However, while that has been an interest of many people, the reason ODOT is talking about this bridge is because now ODOT is independently expected to build an I, a pedestrian bike access. When we had ODOT here for a design meeting several months ago, I believe it was, they asked for input for the community, from the community on which method of having bike-ped access do they prefer. The two options were have it connected to the bridge itself, just a kind of a protected lane, or a separate bridge. ODOT will make that decision, but they do have a lot of input. You can provide more input on their website and also at the open house. But that bridge, that bike-ped bridge is a function of ODOT. They still don't have all the money for the bridge. They have some money for the next phase of funding, and the City of Wilsonville always has to be involved in pushing this forward. So the next challenge is to work with the state and federal legislature to advocate for funding to get that bridge built. So at this open house, ODOT describes the purpose is for the public to hear about the studies they are doing on the design of the bridge and to express your thoughts and preferences. Last, let's see, yep. Our next council meeting is going to be Monday, October 7th at 7:00 PM. So this is my last item, and I wanted to just, this is something we discussed at the work session, and we need a council commitment to go forward on this. We are asked by a group that we participate in called the Clackamas Coordinated Cities Committee, or C4, to support a letter that has been developed with input from Wilsonville and the other cities in Clackamas County that is called a Statement on 2025, on the 2025 State Transportation Package and the Wilsonville Smart 2025 Legislative Priorities. So one of the things I'm going to talk about is the Clackamas County Letter of Values for the Transportation Package. And the second one is the Wilsonville Priorities, particular to Wilsonville, that we are expected to have ready by the end of September in this first phase. So the 2025 Legislative Session is usually, it would expect it to be six months long. It's scheduled to consider a number of important issues, including a major transportation funding package and infrastructure, housing infrastructure financing. Earlier today, we, in the work session, we met on one more area of direction that the city needed to give for a deadline coming up next week, and that is the city's top five priorities for the League of Oregon Cities ranking of issues that they will prioritize. And you can find the long list of these priorities on the city's website. We looked at, in today's meeting packet. So the statements for the Clackamas County Value Statement describes the general values and outcomes that the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee members seek to come from a state legislature transportation funding package. It was, it was a purposeful direction of the C4 Committee that they did not want to endorse any particular funding mechanism or specific project. For one reason, no specifics are known at this time, but it does identify the values, and you can really read that in the packet. There's a lot about having the most functional transportation, having equity, having, making sure it's sensible and fair decisions, and so on and so forth. And really, that's about as much detail as they can go into at this moment. The city council also considered and discussed, as I mentioned, the 2025 Legislative Session Priorities for the city and our transit agency. And our deadline for the pre-session bill drafts is going to be September 27th. Our legislators, Senator Aaron Woods and Representative Courtney Neron, have requested information from us by that date so they can consider them at the same time they get the same thing from other cities. The city staff, as you can see in the packet, we spent a long time studying the legislative priorities. And the, there will be a new city council, of course, in January, and they will have another opportunity to take that even further. So this is just an initial look. So at this time, I have a, may I have a motion and a second to adopt the joint values and outcomes for the 2025 State Legislative Transportation Package by the communities of Clackamas County and the Wilsonville Smart 2025 Legislative Session Priorities?
I move to adopt the joint values and outcomes for the 2025 State Legislative Transportation Package by the communities of Clackamas County and the 2025 State Legislative Session Priorities doing Smart and City of Wilsonville.
Is there a second?
Yes. I second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Well, I, Your Honor, I just wanted to clarify that we spent the majority of our work session discussing all of these, including the C4 Value Statements. And I, and I just wanted to reiterate that, as you, as you mentioned, they do not identify a funding source in, in those, but rather are planning to forward those as values to guide the discussions because it is believed that the transportation package will be a major issue in the legislative session. And so, and, and I think it's important to note that one of the things that is included in that value statement is the I-5 Boone Bridge. And so for us, I think that's an important, that's an important piece. And the other, the other thing that I wanted to just be sure that we brought forward is that in our discussion about the City of Wilsonville and Smart 2025 State Legislative Session Priorities, that our number one priority that the city has put forward is to increase the road and public transit resources in whatever that transportation funding package is going to be that advances the I-5 Boone Bridge and whatever bike-ped facility that will end up being, so that we, as well as the West commuter rail from Wilsonville to Salem, among our other priorities, but that was, that's what is listed as our number one, so.
Thank you. Councilor Genowal?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I would like to actually tack on to what Councilor Linville said, because one of the really important elements and moments that happened in those work sessions, and our work session today was 90 minutes, it was almost always, almost all on these priorities, whether they were the Smart or Legislative or Clackamas County. And what's really important about that for me, and the reason I'm so in support of this, is the dialogue that happened during that work session is really what drives us to when we vote to support or, or, or not on any, on any of these. So transportation, as I was driving, actually on a Saturday afternoon on I-5, was almost as busy as it is at 5 o'clock on a Friday night, which means secondary backup into Wilsonville and on Wilsonville Road. And this is for a lot of reasons that have nothing to do with the transportation that we have within Wilsonville Road and within our own city. We have limited control over the fact that we have a lot of major arteries from the metro market all trying to get onto I-5. So the criticalness of being able to make that one of our top priorities with the legislature is critical. And also, super eye-opening to me during that work session, as I'm sure it would be to many others, is that we are required, there is a requirement to have bike access, bike-ped access. It is not just a fun addition that we get to have because we like people to walk and bike. There's no ulterior motive behind that. It is a requirement now, so that is taken into consideration. And those are really great educational moments that we run into. So it allowed me to be able to support that legislative priority much more, with much more energy than I would have otherwise. So I appreciate what both Mark Ottenad, our, one of our key staff members, and then Greg Leo from the Leo Companies, who works with us, with the legislators, the excellent work that they provided in presentations. I would recommend anybody that has any questions about transportation and any thoughts about that, step back after this meeting and go back and listen to that work session, because I think it'll give you a lot of additional information to help you understand where we're coming from.
Anything else? Okay, there's a, oh, are you okay? Last thing, I just want to do a brief recap on why we, how, why we were looking at the list of priorities from the League of Oregon Cities. We did not vote on that. We don't need to vote on that, but we gave direction. Because the League of Oregon Cities, there are some 241 cities in Oregon, and they will probably have a vote of the top five from, they think, about 150 of those cities. Then they, they will put all of their resources behind the top five. So we really want them to zero in on things that mean a lot to us, to help us get further. And, you know, sometimes there might be one of the top priorities from League of Oregon Cities that isn't really resonating or a big deal for us, but we hope that some of our top priorities get in there, and I think that they will. There was quite a long list. We actually condensed some and recommended that some of the things that are important that we, that we put forward to be included in the top five, we hope would be shelter and homelessness response from the state, combined with behavioral health enhancements, and continued addiction policy reform. That's at the state level. We also obviously put as a big priority, we all completely agreed, that the 2025 Transportation Package should be addressed and, and pushed forward and monitored by the League of Oregon Cities. And we hope that it includes funding and expanding public and inner community transit so that people who are from cities unlike Wilsonville and those cities that we connect with can use transit if that's what they need and it's workable. We also took a look at the suggested priority to shift from a gas tax to a road user fee and added that it should include, making sure that includes something for electric vehicles, which I know it will be. That's a big discussion among all of the people. And that if, they're apparently maybe going to look at a number of road user fees, but an inflation index should be built into that. I think those are the main ones that we discussed today. Oh, and also, funding for, yes, thank you, huge one, infrastructure funding for housing and employment lands. But please look at that list in the packet. So that's the end of my mayor's report. Or, excuse me, before we leave, I want to ask for the vote. We have a motion on the floor. No more discussion. I'm going to call for the vote for these two items, the Clackamas County Values Letter and the Wilsonville Smart Legislative Priorities for this point in the year. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes 4-0. That brings us to our communications section, and we have a report from Republic Services on their annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Cindy Rogers, and I am the Municipal Relationship Manager for Republic Services. And I am joined here this evening by Travis Comfort, our Municipal Contract Administrator. Our presentation this evening is a review of the essential services that we provided for the City of Wilsonville in 2023. We'll be back in early 2025 to update council on the Recycling Modernization Act. Next slide, please. In 2023, our drivers were at the homes of over 5,600 households 12 times a month. We serviced garbage, commingle recycle, yard debris with food waste, and glass, which now includes household batteries. That's all serviced once a week. Just a quick note, from 2021 to 2023, we saw about a 3% increase in residential customers. We've also noticed a slight increase in households that have the 65-gallon roll cart, which is the largest, larger of the three, and a decrease in the 20-gallon. The second chart on the slide shows the number of residential tons collected for all materials. You can see that we collected over 7,500 residential tons in 2023. Next slide, please. The chart on the left shows how many multifamily and commercial customers we serviced in 2023. There's a small typo, you'll see where it says containers. That actually should be customers. So that actually should be the number of customers, because each customer can have multiple containers. So I just wanted to clear that up. And that's accurate in the annual report, so it's just on that slide that it's not right. The chart on the right shows that we collected nearly 8,000 tons from multifamily and commercial customers. Next slide. Slide four shows the number of industrial hauls we performed in 2023. So this is a combination of both compacters and drop boxes. In 2023, we did 6,152 industrial hauls in Wilsonville. And for comparison, we did 6,191 industrial hauls in 2022. And then we did 4,657 in 2021. We hauled over 19,000 tons for our industrial customers in 2023. So it's worth noting that the garbage was down about 10% from 2021. Next slide, please. Slide five shows the year-over-year comparison for the number of tons collected for residential commingle, garbage, and yard debris with food waste. This chart does not include glass. It's worth noting that weather can have a big effect on how many tons of yard debris is generated in any given year. And so if we have a big storm and trees come down or a lot of limbs come down, that can really increase the yard debris. And so that's kind of, that's what we saw in 2020 and 2021, so that's why the tonnage is higher there is from weather events. Next slide. This slide shows the statement of income and schedule of expenses for 2023. Republic Services and the City of Wilsonville are currently working with the city's consultant on a 2024 rate review process, so there'll be more to come on that later this year. And then I will hand it over to Travis, and he will discuss events that we did in 2023, battery recycling, and then an upcoming event that we have next month.
Thank you, Cindy. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald, Council President Ockerball, Wilsonville City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you here this evening. And aside tangent, since you brought up TWIST, they're a really great employer in business in Wilsonville. They were very proactive when we first started collecting polystyrene, so we set up an industrial box for them. They generate an industrial volume of that material each month. And then when the Clackamas County adopted, and then Wilsonville adopted the metro food scraps mandate, they became required because they provide meals for each shift. So they have two full shifts, and then they provide meals for all those employees. So they generate enough food waste to actually fall within that mandate. So, and they were very proactive. We've done a lot of staff outreach and presentations. And then they've informed us that they're also moving even more of their Bay Area staff up to Wilsonville. So we're expecting even more growth there. So, back to the slide in hand. As you know, safety is our number one priority. As you can see on this slide, we have two supervisors doing an impromptu driver inspection and a truck review. This is to give them real-time feedback, little snacks and some cold water on hot days. I've had the privilege of being in this position for just over five years and working with the City of Wilsonville, and I've noticed a marked improvement in the customer feedback over that time. You will see some of the positive feedback that we got from Wilsonville residents on this slide and in our annual report. From birthday drive-bys for children to helping businesses out with enclosure challenges, our drivers and team really do care about the work that they do for the City of Wilsonville. On slide nine, we have two pictures of a recent fire at our Wilsonville City located on Ritter Road. I believe, Mayor, you were even present on that day. So batteries are the number one cause of garbage and recycling truck fires, so that's why it's very important to recycle those. This fire arose in one of our compacted load trailers. So in order to gain greater efficiencies, we compact the waste before we ship it out of Wilsonville. So you can get a lot more tons per trailer, fewer trucks on the road, less gas used. So our crews are trained for this, and with the help of the fire department, they were able to put it out without any sort of equipment or damage to the property.
Say, before you leave that, maybe just use this moment to, to, just tell us about what that fire was caused by. I was there for a meeting with Cindy and just reviewing some things in a tour, and she had just told me about your fire suppression. And we went in to sit down at the table, and the ear-piercing smoke, the fire drill started. I thought, oh, this is, they're really demonstrating the fire drill.
She thought, yeah. We pulled out all the punches for you.
But go ahead and tell what happened, because it's something we want to help inform people about, please.
So in this case, you'll see on the right here, the batteries that were, were 99% sure caused that fire, that were pulled out of that load. So lithium-ion batteries specifically can just conduct being next to each other, so you shouldn't storm at home together. We've even seen, like, somebody dumped a Tesla battery on our Ritter Road facility, and just setting them next to barrels of batteries started to cause the car battery to smoke. So batteries are very dangerous. Wilsonville residents can now recycle batteries in their curbside glass container. Just need to tape the ends of any non-alkaline batteries, put them in a one-quart Ziploc sealed bag, and then put them in your glass container. And then the next slide has a great resource. This is brand-new, last week, came out from Clackamas County. They have an instructional video on how to prepare those batteries. And I'm hoping, I can play it for you now, it's just one minute, and then if you guys like it, hopefully people can share this with friends and family.
Follow these three easy steps to get your batteries ready to recycle curbside. One, prepare. Tape the ends of all batteries except alkaline using clear tape. If you have button cell or coin batteries, you can save time by laying out a long piece of tape. Place the button cell batteries on the tape, being sure not to let batteries touch each other. And then place another long piece of tape on top. Two, bag. Place taped and untaped batteries together in a clear one-quart ZipSeal plastic bag. Three, set out. Place a ZipSeal bag on top of the glass bottles and jars in your glass bin and set out on your regular garbage day. Please only set out the glass bin when it's at least half-full. There's a limit of a single bag per pickup. Find out more about recycling batteries and get other recycling tips at clackamas.us/recycling/batteries or call 503-234-3000. You can also use this QR code.
Yeah, I have to give a big shout-out to Tenille at Clackamas County for putting that together. Batteries have been a big thing, not only for safety, but just getting customers aware that that service is available at the curb. So, very thankful for the work Clackamas County is doing. So in terms of recent events, we had the Wilsonville Bulky Waste Day in May. It was a very successful event. We had 427 cars come through, and they dropped off 50.27 tons. For example, in 2023, we had a total, there's two Bulky Waste Day events each year. There were 783 vehicles, and they dropped off 100.4 tons last year. And that was up from 2022, which saw only 603 cars come in and only 70 tons dropped off. So we're hoping our October 5th event is even better and even more participation. We've seen just increased participation since 2019, when I started helping track these events. So we're just hoping for as many people that can turn out as possible. It's a completely free event for Wilsonville residents, and it's open- It's a completely free event for Wilsonville residents, and it's open from 9 to 5 at our Ritter Road facility. And just a reminder, there will be a notice in the Boons Ferry Messenger that goes out in the beginning of October about the event. We will be back in early 2025 to update the council on the Recycling Modernization Act and how that will impact the opportunity to recycle, which is the recycling mandates that the city has to provide by state code. Thank you again for having us and giving us this opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you for being here. By the way, can you do one more thing that I thought was very fascinating when I was at your facility? And thank you for coming to describe all of this. I thought it was fascinating that there was less garbage, which is, there have to be more people. Somehow, they produce less garbage. That's pretty impressive.
That's good, yeah.
And, but can you talk about your fire suppression system? And then I know it's unique to this facility, or, you know, however you want to describe that.
Yeah, so it's called the Fire Rover, and we've only had it for, it went into effect, I think we got part of it last year and then the rest of it this year. And what it does, it's got thermal sensors, and so, you know, we're not there 24/7. So if it senses heat on the pile of debris that we have, then it will automatic, they'll send a signal to their corporate office, and then somebody can monitor it. And they actually, we have like, it's essentially like a fire hose almost. And it'll, they can drive where the hose goes, and it can put out a fire, or if it senses that there's, you know, heat there. And then it automatically goes off to the fire department, and the fire department's dispatched. So it's, it's an expensive system, but it's definitely worth having. It's, not all facilities have them. There are, we just toured a facility in Marion County today, actually, and they're looking to get that system. Because, I mean, it only takes one fire and it'll pay for itself. So it's a pretty cool thing, and there's, this company has been doing this for a long time, so. But yeah, it's just, it just senses if there's heat, and then they get feedback back sent to them, and then they can decide where the water, it's not really water. It's actually got some type of, like, fire suppression fluid in there that's deployed through the hose, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And I see there's a comment from Councilor Dunwell.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions for you. Would you go back to the slide with the, where the fire was and those little batteries? How big were those?
These are just AA batteries.
And that's what started the fire?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we think started the fire. So it's lithium batteries. I think it's important to distinguish. And I know, like, in my smoke detector, and a carbon dioxide detector, that it looks like it's a regular alkaline AA battery, but it's not. It's a lithium battery. So you really have to look at the battery to make sure. And then if you have those batteries, we can recycle them at the curb. Just have to tape off the ends and then put them in the clear plastic bag.
Thank you. And then I have two other items. You, can you just explain to others, I know why, but, when, in back one of your earlier slides, you showed all of the areas that you're bringing revenue in from. Can you just very quickly explain why, back, I think it's back one more slide?
On the materials, is that?
You're showing all your revenue sources from the different Marion County and other areas.
Oh, I think where we take the material?
Yeah, can you back up and explain that slide in a little bit more detail, right there? So destination, and so you are actually transporting that trash to all of those locations, correct?
Mm-hmm, to those different materials. So as an example, let's say concrete goes to S&amp;H Logging, or to Bryan Clopton, which is that right here in town. So these are where the material goes.
It's stunning that you transport it that far. What is the furthest location that you transport some of this waste to? Do you know?
Probably Coffin Buote, I would say.
How far is that?
It's in Corvallis.
Okay, I find that just intriguing, that we don't even think about the fact that we have, you have to transport it to other locations. And then finally, my other comment was regarding the heavy bulky waste day. Would you please schedule those when I'm in town? They always fall when I'm not in town.
Yeah, sorry about that.
You didn't mention anything about the donation side when people come through. Do you know what you captured this year for donations?
Oh, I don't know. Mark would probably know that. Yeah. Sorry.
We don't do the collection of the donation part.
Okay, so, so just for everyone to know that during the Heavy Waste Day, one of the really cool things that happens is donations are captured, and they go to Wilsonville Community Sharing, correct? And this year, it's like gift cards now and things like that, and you're not necessarily doing food donations, but it makes a significant impact into their donations for the year. And I'm pleased that you partner with us on that, because it really does help so many of the citizens in our city. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I appreciate that. That actually is the most important part of the event, I would say, yeah.
And the one difference between, like, industrial material and where it goes versus the others is that when you get a drop box, you can also dictate where that material goes. And then, like, some things, if it's like a special waste, or like telephone poles or something, they have to go to a certain location, and we can't take them to the Wilsonville facility. So that's why some of these materials have to go straight to where they're going to be disposed of, either Hillsborough or Coffin Buote.
And we're actually pretty lucky here, because we have a lot of outlets for the material that is relatively close. In some parts of the country, or even in the state, they have to go much, much further to get to a facility that will take a lot of these materials, so, yeah.
Of course.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. If I may, really quick, I don't know if any of the councilors were going to speak on this, so I apologize if this is out of turn, but since we're talking about Bulky Waste Day, the Rotary is offering for a limited number of people to do pickup. Were you going to talk about this, Councilor Linville?
Oh, yes.
I'll let Councilor Linville talk about it, then.
Well, actually, good point. So before, if we'll just take this one out of order, if you don't mind, please, and share that, Councilor Linville.
Well, I think the part about the Rotary is not in my report. I don't believe.
Okay, do you want me to share, then? Okay. The Rotary has a limited number of spaces available to handle pickup for people who meet certain qualifications. There is an online form on the city's website, so if you just go to the city's website in the search box and put in the Rotary, it's the first thing that comes up, and you can fill out a request form to have the Rotary help assist in the bulky waste pickup.
Yeah, exciting. Thank you. Sure.
Thank you.
Well, we'll do this while you're still here. Go ahead. So this is probably one of my favorite days, is the Bulky Waste Day. And it is on Saturday, October 5th, and that will be, Mark, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay. From between 9:00 and 1:00 p.m., and I will tell you that I have been there at 9:15, and the line goes down Ritter Road. So I would suggest that people get there early. There's no charge. And I am actually astonished at the amount and the number and the kind of waste that they will accept there. It's not just things that are big and heavy, I mean, it's refrigerators and mattresses and... So, and as Council President Ockervall indicated, oh, no, I guess it was Councilor Dunwell, that in lieu of payment, they are requesting that residents make cash donations onsite via cash check Venmo or gift cards, restaurant cards as well, to Food Bank, the Wilsonville Community Sharing. They weigh the vehicles, if you haven't been there, they weigh your vehicle on the way in, and they weigh your vehicle on the way out to determine the tonnage that is accepted. And you have to be able to unload it yourself. And they ask that you not arrive with materials that you cannot remove from your vehicle without assistance. So, but it can be dishwashers, televisions, refrigerators, any of those kinds of things. They do not want to have construction debris. So that is one of the things that they, that they do not take. Propane bottles, paint, batteries, solvents, those kinds of things, and car tires. But it, again, will be on Saturday, October 5th, and I'm going to also talk about our shred day, but I'll do that later. But it happens to be on the same day, so play, do your timing, so it works. Great. Okay, thank you. That brings us to citizen input, and our city attorney will read the introduction.
Welcome to the Wilsonville City Council meeting. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning city business or any matter over which the council has control. It is also the time to address items not on the agenda. It is a time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room, or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's webpage, The mayor is the presiding officer and preserves order and decorum during the city council meetings. Pursuant to Wilsonville Code Section 2.003 Subsection 14, those who have signed up to speak during citizen input have three minutes to testify. A timer will indicate when your time is done. As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record and state your address, or state that your address is provided on your speaker card. The city council wants to hear from all community members who want to address the council. Please be respectful of others by avoiding talking or other distracting conduct while others are providing their comments to council. The presiding officer or city staff may instruct anyone who's causing a disruption to stop, so the council can continue to complete its official business. Additional disruptions may lead to removal from the meeting, so the meeting can continue to proceed in an orderly manner. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll start with Elizabeth Peters.
Mayor and council. Thank you, Elizabeth Peters, and you have my address. I'm running for Wilsonville City Council. My husband and I moved here 30 years ago. I worked in Wilsonville most of those years. The focus of my career has been on organizational leadership. I had the honor of serving with two of the strongest Oregon Business Trade Associations right here in Wilsonville, the Oregon Restaurant Association and the Oregon Association of Nurseries. I also served with SEDCOR, the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, it's first in the Salem area. Over those 30 years, I served on the Wilsonville Chamber of Commerce, the Clackamas County Economic Development Commission, and the Oregon Veterans Foundation. We love this community, and especially our neighbors. This is a wonderful place to live and contribute. But it has changed so much. Wilsonville has lost its sense of community, and there is an intensifying disconnect between city government and its citizens. We lack effective two-way communication channels to build trust and ensure everyone has a voice. And we can't keep doing what we're doing and expect a different outcome. We need to talk with each other, not at each other. I think City Hall needs to open up and listen to the voice of the customer, those who have invested in this community with their homes and businesses. Let's have frequent, open, public town hall meetings, and share what we like about Wilsonville, and share what could be better, so we can move forward together. People who disagree can have very meaningful conversations that lead to solutions, real solutions. And I have an example here of this type of conversation. We're having them with various groups throughout my campaign. So if you see what we like and what could be better. So as you can see, the citizens of Wilsonville are thirsty for a voice, and it's vital that we listen. So to begin the conversation, I am publicly committing to weekly virtual office hours by Zoom every Friday at 12:30. No agenda, just respectful discussion. Anyone who lives or has a business here in Wilsonville is invited to join the conversation. The Zoom information will be on my website by Friday morning, www.lisforwilsonville.com, and I hope you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you. George Dunn.
All right. Do I give my address?
Oh, yes, and you could just say your name, and I have your address on file, and say that you're, you know, if you live in Wilsonville.
Well, hi, everybody. I live here in Wilsonville. I have for a decade. I am a recent homeowner, me and my wife, proud new homeowners, first time. We live over by Wimbledon Circle, 7662, whatever. Anyways, I'm here, this is my first time attending one of these council meetings. I've been watching them for a while. I just wanted to come and extend a thanks to everything you guys do here. I think these meetings are very informative. Today, being able to sit through the entire meeting, I learned a lot, even just on the I-5 Bridge Project, the housing projects here. There was a lot of questions I had that were answered in that. The battery piece was also super informative. I've been wondering what to do with my three bags of batteries for a few months now. So that's super handy. The other reason I'm here is just, you know, I've heard a lot of discourse that the city has been failing to connect with its citizens. And, you know, I can't speak for everybody, but I can speak for myself and a few other residents in the community. I work here in a community, have for a decade. And my colleagues and I, the company I worked for a few months ago, we hosted a program called the Getting Ahead Program. It's initiative to help get people out of poverty by giving them the resources and stability they need to improve their lives. And as a part of those, that program, our mayor was invited to attend one of the meetings, and she did. She attended that meeting, and what was supposed to be a one-hour session turned into what was a three- or four-hour session, with the 20 or so people in that room asking lots of questions and a really nice dialogue back and forth. I can tell you from working with a lot of those individuals for the better part of a decade, it meant a lot to those people. For, many of those individuals are first-time Americans, they're first-generation Americans. They're working multiple jobs while caring for a family, and they don't always have the time to engage in the civic process. And so having a city official who took the time to come to our workplace, take those work hours, and meet with us meant a whole lot. And so I just wanted to let you all know that I appreciate everything you do, and I appreciate these forums. And anyways, I'm thankful, so that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Lancaster.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Lancaster. My address is on file. I'm also a candidate for mayor this year. I'm here to discuss what I call the Bridges of Wilsonville. I'm here to express my concern about the plans to build two pedestrian bicycle bridges and with regards to the Boone Bridge replacement project. The pedestrian bridges do not address the city's ongoing traffic issues. We face daily congestion, bottlenecks, and these projects will not resolve those problems. They offer limited utility to many residents. My understanding is these projects started with metro grants and strings attached. My visits to hundreds of homes as a candidate, residents feel left out in the process. It's troubling that public engagement was attempted but yielded limited response. Somehow, this has got to change. The proposed I-5 bridge, often called the Bridge to Nowhere, seems like an unnecessary expense with limited use. According to the 2022 U.S. Census, approximately 2.1% of Wilsonville residents use bikes or walk to work. Shouldn't we consider upgrading this bridge to include vehicles? We need more east-west corridors. We need more east-west corridors routes over I-5 to help ease the impact on other streets. The Wilsonville River Project is promoted as a regional connector for cyclists. While I support cycling, this is, is this the best use of our resources when many see no pressing need for it? Perhaps it could be integrated, as you spoke earlier, into the Boone Bridge Replacement Project as a part of a comprehensive solution. ODOT, as you mentioned earlier, also will be here to present an open house to the public regarding the replacement bridge. To me, this project should be the city's top priority. It's crucial to address the bottleneck the Boone Bridge presents. This needs to happen quickly. Also, in closing, we need new ways to involve residents and gather actionable input on the issues. Without large-scale involvement upfront, the city will continue to face ongoing criticism and skepticism. The cost of these projects falls on the taxpayers. In the current economic climate, shouldn't Wilsonville focus on solutions that will relieve, that will offer relief and not add to taxpayer debt? Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Garcia Davidson. Oh, you're going to pass? Okay. Bill Bagnall.
Good evening. First off, I would like to thank Counselor Dunwell for your very thoughtful, heartfelt post over the weekend on Facebook. Words matter. Anger and hatred that's been directed at you folks by some people in our city, it has no place. And I appreciated your explanation and your tone and the hope, and I hope that all of us listen. The reason I'm here tonight is to ask a question and then I'll sit down. I'm doing something I told someone to do on Facebook over the weekend. And this question revolves around the Town Center Plan, of which I am in support of. And for months, we have heard that there will be 4,400 home housing units built there or approximately therein. But I understood there to be 1,600 housing units to be built over a period of 40 years. The numbers go back and forth. We're on social media. We're being shown screenshots and what I presume to be old reports or feasibility studies that are showing us different numbers. So I told someone they should come to city council and they should bring their question directly to those in charge. So I'm doing what I told someone on Facebook to do. And so I would like to answer, have the answer to the question that we can all point to in this video to say, are there 4,400 homes planned in the Town Center Plan or is it more of the 1,600 homes in the 40-year period? Thank you.
Thank you. Now Owen Bridge.
Good evening. My name's Owen Bridge. My address is on the page. Tonight was actually going to be my prep night to write a statement, but then I was reminded that tonight was city council meeting, so I apologize that I don't have a written statement for you. But I do have a few things on my mind that I at least want to express to the council. Number one, just to start with something positive, is I went to the council meeting two weeks ago and I'm really glad that you guys highlighted the skate park mural. Absolutely tasteful, wholesome, I absolutely love it. My family gets really fired up about going down to the Memorial Park and seeing that. It is just a beautiful piece of art, so thank you for helping facilitate that. And then Mayor Fitzgerald, thank you for also helping out with the MOB issue with our trees. I live in a community where that is an impact on us and, you know, whatever we could do to save our trees, as an Oregonian, I love our trees and we need to save them as best as we can. So the issue that I want to talk about, though, is in regards to the Town Center Plan and the transit orient, the new housing development by the Transit Center. So the Town Center Plan, just to start with that, I'm concerned by the conversation and the council's disposition on the questions that come up on this because there seems to be a lot of confusion from what started as a plan, maybe in like 2019. Five, six years go by, the world's a different place. There's a lot of concerns about high-density housing in transit, in the Town Center without addressing the traffic problems, without having to focus first on opening our businesses that have closed down. Fry's Electronics, Albertson's, Northwest Rugs is going away, Office Depot, the noodle restaurant next to Chipotle, the World of Speed Museum. I mean, I feel like we should be rolling out the red carpet and focusing so much more effort on inviting more businesses to come in and take over those places to create more jobs, boost the economy in Wilsonville rather than, I don't know if shoehorning is the right word, this high-density housing plan that's going to create a massive amount of gridlock. So that's a concern. The other thing is the Transit Center Project with the Palindrom Communities Builder. So this is directly from the Bureau of Labor and Industries. I just want to read directly from it. It says, "Palindrom Communities LLC, a private entity proposes to construct a new mixed-use development on a 1.39-acre lot at the Transit Center. The property will be sold," this is city property, "to Palindrom for $1." That seems very bizarre, is what I'll say. My problem is not that it was sold for a dollar necessarily, even though it objectively is worth a lot more for a big plot of land like that. My challenge is that it is so hard to understand why that deal was made. So I would like to, I mean, I know you're not going to respond right now, but maybe later this evening, if we can get a response on how that deal was done.
Excellent. Thank you. We will do that. And we, like we said at the beginning, we answer all the questions that we can tonight. And so there might be some that we get that need more research, but thank you. Next is Cornelia Gibson.
I've just come back from, hi, Cornelia, I live here in Wilsonville, have lived here for 30-some years and I really liked living here. Just came back from a long trip to Europe and let me talk about high-density. And if you do high-density right, it can be done very well. And I think our city and the city council have been doing a marvelous job in planning it correctly. And if we just proceed with the way the master plan was laid out, I think we'll be just fine. And again, I thank you, I love the way the city is run. There are a lot of good experiences. I do think that we communicate well with our citizens. And I also have a friend that told me that please pass on this year about the citizens, the city caring for its people. She went to the mall, the Target, at 9:30 in the evening as a single woman and comes out late at night and, you know, it's unpleasant because it's dark. And there's a police officer standing there just watching out that everything is working out okay. So she felt very protected and she thinks the city is doing a marvelous job in taking care of its citizens. And that's all I want to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glad that she got home well. The next one is Adam Cunningham.
Good evening. My name's Adam Cunningham. My information's on the speaker card. I'm a Wilsonville citizen and a candidate for Wilsonville City Council. I'm here to continue on my conversation with you in three-minute increments. Tonight, I'm taking the evening off from pounding the numbers and issues I see with the Town Center Plan. I've had two meetings with city staff and Mayor Fitzgerald in the past two weeks where I sought clarity on the issues. Mayor Fitzgerald has promised me that answers are forthcoming and I look forward to hearing from her. Tonight, I want to make it clear that I genuinely do care about our community and our wonderful city. It is for that reason that I felt compelled to address our citizens' concerns about the Town Center Plan. My wife and I chose Wilsonville as a place to raise our family because of its smaller town charm, the incredible people who make up our community, and the beautiful parks, and the nearby natural resources that enrich our lives. We fell in love with the quiet suburban lifestyle Wilsonville offers. You must also share this sentiment since you live here. I can tell you that it was not for the hope for five-story high-rises and inner-city density that drew us here. I have been lucky enough to become a part of the fabric of this community and for that, I am grateful. I got the chance to grill hot dogs at a Friday night Wilsonville Wildcats football game and I'm scheduled to do three more this season. Full disclosure, my high schooler is a baseball player, so I'm hoping that someone else will grill the dogs during baseball season so that I can watch the games and cheer him on. I saw so many kids and families that I've coached in baseball. Everybody, well, everybody but Nelson, had a great time at the game. I would highly suggest to anyone in the community to find a way to do something for your community that you've never done before. Running for city council has opened so many doors to these opportunities for me and I look forward to doing them for years to come. But Wilsonville stands at a crossroads. If we continue down the path we're on, our city will be fundamentally changed in ways that I believe few intended. There's another path, though, a path that prioritizes the livability of our town for current residents, a path that focuses on what is best for our quality of life while rejecting the demands of outside influences that would have us solve the problems that they created. My intention in raising the questions that I have these past couple of months is to ensure that we preserve the very essence of what makes Wilsonville a great place to call home. I am committed to this cause and I believe that together, we can preserve what we love about our city while finding ways for it to grow in ways that won't destroy that. Thank you all.
Thank you. We have one more speaker card from Tim Knapp.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and council. I've been troubled by some of the dialogue I've seen online and at prior council meetings and I thought important to come and talk a little bit about it. Oregon residents, with very few exceptions unless you're a full-blooded American, Native American, you know, came from somewhere else and people came to their communities and built communities. And that has been kind of the ethos of Oregon for a long time. We've traditionally had kind of a live and let live philosophy and I think people have appreciated that. And I become concerned when I hear people talking about they don't want this or they don't want that or they don't want something else that seems to narrow down to they don't want certain people or certain communities. I think that we have to have room for everyone in our community. I think that's what makes it a community and that means that people will have different needs, they need different type of housing, they need different services, different amenities. But we have many different types of neighborhoods and we should consciously have different types of neighborhoods where everybody that desires can find a place to fit in and be part of our community. So I'm hopeful that we will continue to do that. We have people that work here that can't afford to live here or can't find a place to live here. We have police and fire personnel, we have workers of all kinds in our vast employment and our industries. We have maintenance personnel, we have grocery checkers, we have healthcare workers, we have baristas. You know, if they all have to commute in from somewhere else in order to come work here, that's not really helpful to the traffic congestion that people complain about. So we need to try to think about this long-term and to facilitate projects that will bring a diversity of neighborhoods and communities here. I also wanted to talk a little bit about our community survey that we've been doing for, I don't know how long, more than a decade, maybe two decades. And the, you know, I hear a few loud voices complaining about things, but the vast majority of the responses in our community surveys say that people love living here, that they think it's predominantly desirable. Not that we don't have problems, that's why we all need to work together. There's always issues to resolve. But just to cite a few, people that say that we're good or very good. Overall feeling of safety, 88%. Wilsonville is a good place to live, 87%. Overall quality of life in Wilsonville, 86%. Recommend other people live here, 85%. Great place to raise kids, 85%. I mean, those don't happen by chance. That's long-term planning and care by you folks and your predecessors and those that will come after you. So thank you for that work.
Thank you very much. And thank you, just reminding everybody, we don't want to have clapping because, you know, that was the end. Everybody's presented, which is great, but just to keep it going, I do want to ask if we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone? Okay? I looked at my notes here and I can, and I'm just looking at everyone who spoke and I have a, I have a question from Bill Bagnall and I have a couple of questions from Owen Bridge that I can answer. And I think I can answer, well, Adam Cunningham and I are going to meet, but I might be able to get to some of that wherever he is there. Okay. So I will start with, actually, I would like to ask the staff to bring up, and I asked you to maybe have this ready in case we needed it. It's just a page from the Town Center Plan and I think this will help. Yep, there it is. Is it visible to people? Is it hard to read? I don't know if you can make it a little bigger somehow? And I will, actually, let's put this on, we'll make sure that we put it on or put it with the meeting packet with the minutes after the meeting. That's really great right there. So I've understood from various people that it is, you know, I want to know, what is going to be at Town Center? How do we know that? And I'll just give a brief answer here. I'll try to make it brief, I'm looking at the clock, so I don't talk too much. But in 2017, the community started the Town Center Planning Process. And if you go to the city website and look up Town Center Plan, you can find this thing that I just had it printed at Office Depot. But with all kinds of things, it has a page early on that describes the timeline, which went from 2017 to 2019. And it devised a, the community, many community members were involved, like 2,000 people. And the, if you were to boil it down to what was going to be, what was the result of what the people wanted, community members are passionate about a future Town Center and are clearly voiced a vision for the Town Center. There's a lot you can read in this report, but it basically was to have an active Town Center with room for, with opportunities for people to gather, a reason you would be there to walk around restaurants, gathering places, small businesses, and housing. Why would you have housing? In all the studies we've done, and what we can see right now is when you don't have enough people near the stores, the stores don't get very many customers. And we have a need for housing. And while everyone does not agree, but that whole two-year process recognized that is right near the freeway and there were many things that needed to be addressed that came up in the process about the streets, how we can make them function better and how we can make the traffic work better and how can people walk better through the place. But I'm just going to answer the question on housing and I'm happy to discuss this in more detail. But this chart shows, after many studies and economic development, an economist was hired, we had, we had all kinds of elements of this that went through quite a bit of, we had an urban renewal strategic plan, a Town Center strategic plan, and implementation analysis. Because in order to build that kind of a thing, how do you get it started? It's determined that you need to have some public infrastructure, obviously, it's not just going to come about overnight. And within this many-page booklet is a prediction, a guess, on how many housing units would probably be there, no one has a crystal ball, in 40 years. And so going across, and of course, I don't think anybody can guess what is going to happen exactly in 40 years, and you can read a little bit more about how they got there in the financial, the funding analysis that they did. First row is existing people. And there were, in the way that existing occupants, and I would say, had a meeting with the planning director today, and in planning, when you're doing this kind of work, the way that square footage for commercial space, retail space, and office space is recognized is by the square foot because you don't know how many people are going to be in any one space. So the standard method of talking about that kind of space is in the square footage. In the residential units, which is the last column, the standard way of describing residential units is not by how many people are in each one, but by the number of units. So that is different from the way you, in this, in the field, you describe commercial, retail, and office. So that is what is existing today. And if you add all of those up, it's 2,132 people. 2,132 people right now in the Town Center who are either working there or living there, eighty residential units. And by the way, by the way, there is a multiplier used here, which was two, which you can't see right here, but it's 2.28 persons per residential unit, which is probably a little bit, you know, that'll change over time depending on how many kids people are having. There were, although the Town Center Plan, the plan itself is, is just that, it is a plan. Where will the streets be? How will the stormwater be managed? How would it look? What would the streets look like? That was voted in by the prior council and adopted June 5th, 2019, and it is a part of the comprehensive plan. After that, there are many different steps that had to go about, you know, we had a plan, how are we going to make it happen? That is when a funding analysis needed to start happening. What are the different ways you can fund the infrastructure on a place like Town Center? So those analyses were done over and through 2022, and some of them were adopted in 2023. So all of this does not go back to 2019. Let's go to the second row. Net new development in twenty years, as you can read those numbers. So of course, we looked at the existing people, and now we're looking at net new development, that is excluding the existing people in twenty years. And you, I don't know if you can read all the numbers, but in residential units over here on the far right, in the first twenty years, they say eighteen-hundred-and-eighty. The third column, what did I say? Oh, eight-hundred-and-eighty. Thank you. I appreciate monitoring what I'm saying here. Third call, third row, net new development over forty years. Now, this is taking the comprehensive view of the total from today to forty years, what is projected using an economic and market analysis. And this is based on how people, how housing has grown in Wilsonville over time, and what the economic outlook is, and what it, what it's expected to be. And it's somewhere around a hundred to a hundred-and-twenty new residential units a year over time to get to this point. So at forty years, if you go all the way across, you get to sixteen-hundred units. I'm looking at the right column, so if you add that up, it's sixteen-hundred-and-eighty units, times 2.28 people per unit, which is probably not, you know, is not going to be accurate. Each unit will be a little bit different. And together, adding up the existing people, which is 2,132. Now, we're talking about the people living in these. It'd be 2,132 to start with, and after forty years, assuming about 2.28 per new unit, we're adding 6,000, we're projecting, again, this is a guess using economic projection standards, 6,318, bringing us to, if we add the people who are working and living in the Town Center now, plus the projected new people over forty years, we get 8,450. So that's one description. I'm, we will post this on the website, and I'm sure, I'm happy to have, to talk about this later with other people. So that, looking at my notes, Bill Bagnall, that was your question, okay? Now, Owen Bridge, I have a note that you had asked about traffic and concerns. There's a lot to learn when you start going to these meetings, and I never knew about the strategy that Wilsonville uses. I don't think all cities use them, many, I hope, do. Wilsonville has a strategy or a policy of practice called concurrency. I think that's the right, concurrency. And it, it, what it means is if somebody proposes a development, let's say somebody's going to build a skating rink, they want to build a skating rink, that would be super fun. They know where they want to put it, they come to the Planning Commission, go through all the steps, and it's, it's going to be in some hypothetical location, I won't name one. But we won't, we won't be able to start it until we know, we will not let them start it until we have a plan for the streets and signals around, you know, to get to and from that within two years. That's just a brief description on concurrency. And with the Town Center Plan, there, there's a lot to talk about with urban renewal, but the, it's a forty-year plan, so it happens incrementally, and developments will not be approved until there is sufficient infrastructure to support them, stormwater, sewer, water, and traffic. And there's a traffic analysis for each one. So if twenty developers showed up tomorrow, which I doubt they will, because only one has showed up in five years, and we have not started the urban renewal financing plan for the infrastructure, but if twenty of them showed up tomorrow, and they had these buildings designed, and they'd already met with planning, and they wanted to go ahead, each one of those would have to go before the Development Review Board, which is a committee of citizens and has a whole process behind it, and go through all of the details to see, do we have the infrastructure, the street systems, and the signals to allow those to be started? So each one is subject to those, those things, and if things go very slowly, it would develop very slowly, the economy. So you develop it as you go. Palindrome, you asked about transit-oriented development and palindrome. I'd love to send you some pieces on this so you have more information, because I probably won't be able to give it all real quickly, but, and accurately, I don't have it all memorized. So with that in mind, this is how that building started. There is a document that many citizens and our former councillor Ben West put together, I have it right here. And it was, it was started, I think, it was started several years ago, I know it was finished in 2020, and it is called the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. And you can find it on the city website. It's got a lot of really great information. It was finished June 15th, 2020, and it actually is the precursor to some steps that we are being required to do right now by Metro to, and the state, actually, the state of Oregon, to predict, to look at how much housing we have, how much we have going on. All cities are having to do this. How much land do we have, and how is the state going in getting to those targets? That is a requirement of the state of Oregon. But in this equitable housing strategic plan, the city got a grant to do this. Then, city councillor Ben West wanted to chair the task force, and it has a lot of details. They did a lot of demographic study and identified, Eco Northwest was the consultant, talked about how the population is projected to grow, and the makeup of our community, and they also looked at what types of housing we had. I won't go through the whole thing here, there's this tremendous amount of information in here. But I will lead, I will read seven items that were identified in this plan that was adopted by the city council, and instead of just like making things up out of nowhere, we do look at this, you know, how are we doing on this? Because we had a committee, we all worked on it, there's, and so a lot of it has been accomplished. I'll just read, the policy objectives of this plan is how we got to that building, okay? And it said, "The city pursued this equitable housing grant in 2016 that funded the work to produce this plan. To guide development of the plan, they developed a set of, the council developed a set of policy objectives. The objectives drew from adopted policies and priorities, stakeholder input from the Planning Commission, and this equitable housing strategic plan task force, which I just described, that you can read about in this book. These objectives set the course for the city's action to improve equitable access to a range of housing in Wilsonville and address the identified needs within the city. They wanted to pursue a balanced housing mix with a variety of choices to meet the needs of current and future residents of varying financial resources. Number one, greater availability of a diversity of housing types for a full range of price points to serve the community." We have had numerous visits from people at this, these meetings that say they are getting priced out of their apartments, they have to leave, they can't live here anymore, it's just too expensive. They are some people we hear from. Number two, increased partnerships with nonprofits and for-profit housing developer, developers. That came into play in the palindrome building. Number three, new and expanded affordable home ownership opportunities, especially for first-time homebuyers. This is one of the hardest ones in here. I am sorry that I don't get to work more on it, because it is one that I would love to see work more in Wilsonville. We have had some great meetings with Habitat for Humanity and a group called Proud Ground, and I hope the next council can work on that, because this has been a big priority of the council. It requires money, this is one of the things that maybe the state can help us with. But the way I see it is you'd walk into a neighborhood, walking down the street, there's some townhomes and houses, and you wouldn't know that the third house on the right is funded with a mechanism like Habitat for Humanity, and there's a family that lives there that doesn't have the kind of income that buys the rest of the houses. Nobody knows it, there's no sign on the house, but they own a part of that land and house. When they decide to sell it, they have a pro-rata share of the equity, and that because of the way the house was deeded, and these would be managed by a group like, a nonprofit like the ones I described, then it is eligible, the next people who are eligible to buy that, a pro-rata share of that, also have income requirements. So those are great solutions, but they really require a lot of time and money, and I hope that can be a next strategy. Number four, reduced risk of housing displacement. We have had a lot of people come to us talking about that, as I just described. Number five, targeted housing opportunities in areas with access to services and public transit. That got us down to the transit center. Maintenance and expansion of quality subsidized affordable housing stock. So that was one of the recommendations and goals. And implementation of all housing policies through a lens of social equity and inclusion. And within this, I think it's on page thirty-one, there's a section that says, "Secure land for development of affordable and equitable housing." So though it takes many, many hours, when you get to go sit in these meetings, which they're public meetings, when you sit with other mayors, anyone can go to them, and you can hear how they have done this, affordable housing, because it's not easy, it's very expensive. You're not going to ask a construction company, hey, why don't you just take the hit and build some housing and just charge us half? I mean, there might be a couple people who want to do that once, but we can't expect construction companies to do that with their own money very often. And so the first step that is suggested in making these work is, does the city own any of its own land that can be used for this? Okay, so our, right there at the West Station was this little piece of land that you see as you drive in, I mean, it's now under construction, that the city owned, right next to a gigantic parking lot that is owned and operated by Triment. There is a funding source for transit-oriented developments when, you know, you've got housing near transit. So that was one of the sources. We talked about using that land that we used for it, and it took, I know, I know we made a vote to go ahead in December 2022, so it must have taken like four years to work on this thing, three or four years. So it's really public-private partnerships, and that we looked at, should we, should the city keep owning that piece of ground? So we could have charged nothing for it, and, because you, you need to raise a lot of money from different sources, and I can send you, and we'll put a sheet up in the, in the materials that tell the different sources for this, for this affordable housing. On the ground floor, we got 1.9 million from representative, from the legislature. That money is used for only the ground floor functions, because the affordable housing wouldn't let you do this. You had to find other money for it. So we found other money, so on the ground floor, it's going to have Wilsonville Community Sharing Base there, which does counselling, obviously, the food bank, and the idea is, hopefully, many of the people who needed to live there, I hope they will be able to not need to live there later and move on to other things. There are people who are, you know, in, up in years, and they're not suddenly going to start getting a job that pays six figures when they're sixty-nine years old. And so they may be needing, or they're disabled, have a, have some kind of a condition. But the ground floor will have Wilsonville Community Sharing, it will have the, a transit center with our Transit Information Center about using smart and going and connecting with all of the nearby transit agencies, and it will have a gathering space. So where anybody riding your bike by, you live nearby, go in the cafe, enjoy that, and, you know, we're then part of that community. And I will wrap this up, because I'm sure you're really sick of me talking, I'm sorry. But why was it $1?
Yes.
Okay. We could have, you know, taken the market value of it and continued owning it and let them lease it, right? The developer. And we looked at that. We looked at that, and we also looked at making the developer the owner of it, and hearing the different pluses and minuses of each of those two choices. As a council, we decided it was most financially prudent to have the developer own the property, because we are not a landlord. Now, another council might have decided differently. That was our decision there. We could have charged them, I don't know, $500,000, but then we would have had to go find $500,000. And so I know it's, it's an oxymoron kind of a thing when you, when you're thinking about this, but that is what you see happening with these buildings many times. So there's a lot more to it, but I hope that answers it to begin with. Glad you liked the skate park, and that was put together by the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission members of our community. Oh, I do have a couple other things. Northwest rugs, did you know that Standard TV and Appliance is moving in there?
I did.
Okay. Why Northwest rugs? You know, they, they had some business decision to move out, I love that place, I'm sorry it's not there, but I'm going to shop at Standard TV and Appliance. Office Depot, I'm not going to ask people to raise their hands on how many times a week they went in there to buy things, but I talked to the manager many times, I love that place, I love stationary stores. He was telling me for over a year that the higher-ups at the regional lever were telling, were saying, you are not coming back, your store is not getting to its pre-pandemic levels. I don't know how many crazy sales and attraction events you can have at an office supply store, but it didn't work out, and their corporate decided that store was no longer going to be there. I hope there's something very cool coming in there, and I'm sorry it's not there. World of Speed, love that place, got to go to the grand opening, it was fantastic. It was developed as a philanthropic project by the Baney family, and unfortunately, and they had friends and networks, these fantastic cars, maybe you're a car fan, it was absolutely fantastic thing to have in Wilsonville, and they did so much for that building. But very sadly, Dave Baney passed away, and too young, and for various, he was the heart and soul of that. He was the super racecar guy, and that was his project, and sadly, the family has decided maybe it just didn't work without that person, and they are holding it, and it's, you know, they have, it's their decision what they're going to do with it, maybe they are going to have long-term ownership, but. And then, last one, Albertsons. Loved Albertsons, so convenient, it was tragic. Why did it close?
So that Trader Joe's can come in?
That'd be nice. That would be nice, but that isn't the reason it closed. It closed because Safeway and Albertsons merged.
Yes.
And they decided to close that Albertsons, okay? The Safeway-Albertsons did. They had a long-term lease in that, of that building. And in talking, our economic, we do have an Economic Development Director who does work on economic development, and last I checked, we have a private sector payroll in Wilsonville of 1.6 billion, and I don't know if that's an abstract number, we can look at how much it's grown. We're not doing a great job of attracting really fun restaurants or skating rinks. Maybe we can have that if we have the Town Center, we can attract, that's where that came from. But the Albertsons building, just think about if you were the owner of that building, and you had a fifteen-year lease, and the people moved out, and they're going to keep it looking nice and clean, and you still get to keep the lease payments. All you have to do, all you have to do is keep it looking nice from the outside, you collect your lease payments. If they chose to move out early, if they wanted to vacate the lease, as I have been told, it would be a huge penalty payment. So they have not chosen to do that. Other grocery stores can move in there, they're not opposed to that. It is, the building is owned by someone, the city can't tell them, obviously, this is who's going to move in there. But for various reasons, maybe it's the size, the location, there are some brands that maybe would compete with, with their other store. It has not changed hands. It has not changed hands yet. The end of that lease is not forever, but I share your thing. Now, the last thing I'll say is, prior to Safeway and Albert, Albertsons merging, as you might remember, Hagan, was it Hagan and Albertsons merged?
Yes.
And then someone else came in, a bunch of stores closed. Same reason why you see an empty store in Twolleton. Right now, you can read the stories about, so we've got Safeway and Albertsons together. Now Kroger, which owns Fred Meyer, wants to merge with Safeway and Albertsons. And so the city of Wilsonville has been on that case as much as we can. Obviously, it's, it's the largest grocery store merger in the United States. I don't think they're going to think that Wilsonville is the decider on this thing, but we have tried to make a lot of noise about it, and it is in the Supreme Court right now, right? Do you have a, our city attorney?
It's at the federal district court level in Portland, Oregon.
Federal district court letter, level happens to be in Portland, Oregon. And yes, it would be super fantastic if Trader Joe's moved here. I have heard that, I don't know if this is true, but I have heard that it helps to send him an email. So that is all that I have for that right now. Sorry for all of the talking. And.
Mayor, I could address the question on the bridges.
The bridges?
Yeah.
Please.
Earlier you, it was brought up, so.
Another question, okay.
Essentially, ODOT has to fund, design, and pay for the pedestrian. Now, their two options are to build something that great on the freeway or a separate connection across the Willamette River.
This is the bridge over the Willamette?
That's the French, French Prairie, yeah, that's what it's coming for. The other bridge, the I-5 pedestrian bridge, the only way that gets funded is through a federal or state grant. We, we do collect a portion of our transportation development impact fees are set aside for design and for some right-of-way acquisition and for whatever matching that we would have to do. But there's no general fund dollars or tax dollars coming out. That's all paid for by developers when they build a new employment center or, or houses in Wilsonville.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify.
And we did apply for a federal grant last year, did not get it. And in the, in the urban renewal, Town Center Urban Renewal Strategic Plan Document, I think that's the right one, you will see a recommendation from the Urban Renewal Task Force, seconded by the City Council, that it is recommended that the city try to get other sources' money for various projects in Town Center to reduce the reliance on urban renewal. And like you said, ideally, that would be, there would be some federal grant that may come for that because of the reasons that it connects these neighborhoods in a way that many people want. Not everyone wants it. So with that, I'm going to go, oh, councillor, in fact, why don't I go to you for your councillor comments, councillor Linville? We'll start with you.
Thank you. I think one of the things that, that I, I want to remind everyone about is that when the discussions happened about the transit-oriented development, we had discussions about that for almost two years, and it was on the city council agenda, on the work session agendas. The discussion about how that would be financed, what the city's role would be, what the contract with Palidrome would look like, was all on the city council agendas, open to the public. We welcome, I love that we have this room almost full. We would love to have had people have input into what was going on and have that discussion. None of those discussions happened outside of public meetings. And I think, I want to just reemphasize councillor Dunwell's comments about the importance of our work sessions. And the discussions that happen in those work sessions really explain what happens in the decisions that we make. And many of the concerns that we hear from our citizens about decisions that get made would be, we would love to have, share that information because so much happens in those work sessions. And so I just, I just wanted to, and, and I think there are some restrictions that maybe we could talk about or publish or something that have to do with the transit-oriented development and what that means to the developer in terms of their obligations, I mean.
We, we do have an article in the next, it was for a messenger.
Yeah.
On the financing and the restrictions by the developer, but it's, it'll be a lot of information.
Yeah.
So if folks are interested, it'll be in there.
Yeah. I thought of one more question that I heard out here, and I'm going to ask, and then I'll turn it over to council president, Alcarroll, for councillor comments. For our city attorney and our, who is also our parliamentarian, could you please address why we have this three-minute speaking time? Thank you.
The three-minute time cap comes from our city code. So it was adopted, I think, back in the 90s, that, the 80s or the 90s, that there be a three-minute limit on any public testimony. That's straight out of the code.
What do you see in other cities? Is that unusual or common?
It's extremely common, and actually, I've seen less time.
Thank you.
And a time limit on overall comments, limited to like 30 minutes total. So essentially, it allows very few people to speak in a council meeting, which we do not restrict.
And I think the reason for the limitation is that, in my view, there could be many different reasons. I think it's because the city council meetings are where you're supposed, we have to make decisions about the city, budget decisions, various decisions, and it should be done in a way that somebody could stand to sit there for us, you know, this is long enough as it is. I mean, just think if we went till midnight. And so there comes a point where, where it's too much, and that's probably where it came from.
Yes, and mayor, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think one of the things that we've heard from the community members is discussions that they have with staff. Staff are always willing to have discussion, a longer discussion. And I know even personally on projects I've worked on, spending over an hour with a single community member to talk through issues. So always staff are welcome to have discussions with any community member about a project.
So that brings me to, I asked Zoe, if you could, that just reminds me, this is, I wanted to ask if Zoe Monberg could give a little pitch for Civics Academy, which is another way that we spend a lot of time with people. If you could just describe it briefly.
Sure. Thank you, mayor. So the Civics Academy is open to all community members, all individuals that live in the community, and if there's space available, we do open it up to business owners. It is a free program that we offer once a year. The application period is open now. It is open online through November 8th. If you go to our city website and click on residents, and then click on, I believe it's something about getting involved, it will say Civics Academy. If you click there, there is a bold link on the website that you can click and you can apply. We have seven meetings through the program. So once a month for seven months, they're about three hours long, but you have the opportunity to meet directly with the key players on our staff and hear directly from them on the projects that they're working on, on the organization, how it functions, our programming, operations, all of those things. So if you have questions or interest in the program, the flyer is at the back of the room. If you go on the city website, again, happy to answer any questions about that program.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will return to our councillor comments, starting with councillor president, council president Alcarroll.
Thank you, but actually, did councillor Linville want to share more about Shred Day?
We'll go back.
You'll go, you'll go back. Okay. I didn't, I didn't want to take that moment away from you, so.
About, about.
Shred Day.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I know. Okay. So since our last meeting, I attended the Twist Bioscience anniversary event and spoke with the business leaders in that employer and also toured their facility. It was the first time that I had been inside the facility. It's very impressive, and it was good to hear from the business leaders there, they're, about their experience in Wilsonville and also about their experience recruiting workforce in Wilsonville for Twist Bioscience. And I'm, I'm glad to have that as part of the collection of businesses that is in the city. It, it sounds like there's a lot of opportunity for growth, both of the, the business, but also growth for individual employees within the company. I also attended, this was, this was a very enjoyable thing. I attended an event or a door decorating judging event at Wood Middle School. And it is a tradition in the middle school for the advisory classrooms to all decorate their doors, a way of having a joined activity with the students there and showing some school spirit. And there was a number of community leaders, and the mayor and I both participated, that helped do some of the judging for that contest. But in the process of that, you're walking through the school, you're viewing every single classroom in that school and interacting with the teachers in that school and hearing about what's happening in this school year for their, their classrooms. And that was a fantastic opportunity to, to have some of those discussions and also see the work of some of our very creative young people in the city. I wanted to mention that, and this went out in our, Matt Lorenzen's kind of regular email that he sends out to businesses in the Wilsonville community, and that is about the childcare survey. I think I mentioned it actually in our last council meeting, that we had provided a link and solicited responses for this childcare survey at our Fun in the Park or Town Center Park, Party in the Park. Thank you. I'm going to call it every name but the right one. Party in the Park, which happened in August. So that was, that was a way that we could get some feedback from our community. But community members are invited to go online and fill out this survey, and it collects information about childcare needs of families in Wilsonville. And the URL that you would want to follow is bit.ly/wv, like Wilsonville, childcare. So, and that W V childcare is all one word. So please check that out. And then the last thing that I wanted to share is about an event that's happening tomorrow at our library. And the city's DEI committee will be having a, one of their first speaker events at the library. This will be hosted in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, which just began. And the free event will feature Anthony Veliz, founder of Podar, which is Oregon's Latino Leadership Network. And it will be tomorrow, September 17th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Wilsonville Public Library. And it will actually be the first of multiple planned speaker events that will be hosted over the 2024, 2025 year. So hope to see you there.
Thank you. Back to councillor Linville.
Thank you. I wanted to give an update on where we are. As you recall, I sit on the opioid settlement prevention, treatment, and recovery board. And I just wanted to let the council know and the, and the citizens to know that my role is, my role is to represent, I am, I was selected as a representative by the League of Oregon Cities to represent cities that are 25,000 and above. So I, my voice is really to try and say, what are the things that are possible as we dole out this state money? And since the RME meeting, we have allocated over $41 million for programs on primary prevention, of which Clarkmoss County got about $700,000 recovery treatment. And in Clarkmoss County, Oregon City, and rural Clarkmoss County, two mobile units for medication units were allocated. So, and I wanted to be sure that those mobile units would be able to come to cities like Wilsonville for medication, for treatment. So we will continue to, we're, we're about at the place where we think most of the money that's coming in from the settlement for the pharmaceutical companies is, is kind of capped. There's a few more that we think might come in, but there was a court case that kind of let, there was an agreement done to, with one of the pharmaceutical companies that allowed them to get out from underneath paying some of the money that was originally agreed upon. So we're a little bit iffy about that, but we will continue. Our next meeting is going to be in the first week in October, so I think it's the third. The Greater Portland Inc. Small Cities Consortium meeting for this month is canceled because of the GPI Economic Summit is just about at the same time. And then I wanted to give a little bit of update on the, the Planning Advisory Committee for the Aurora Airport Master Plan. As you know, I sit on that PAC as a representative of Wilsonville. And our meeting was supposed, our next PAC meeting, advisory committee meeting was supposed to be on the 17th of this month, which is tomorrow. And we just received a notice that said that that meeting has been moved to the 15th of October. And I will give you the rationale for that. The note said that some of you, which are the PAC members, some of you submitted very lengthy responses, and the technical team needs more time to review and draft responses that we can bring back to the group. In the meantime, on September the 5th, the Oregon Department of Aviation Board met, and the Century West consultants that are, that are spearheading the master planning process for the airport, provided a report to them. And although I didn't attend that meeting, my understanding is that when the options were discussed with the board and the amount of money that was anticipated needing to be spent on the options to either move, purchase some of the hangars, the property, or move the Hubbard Highway, purchase some other land, that members of the board were very concerned that that much money would be spent on a little tiny airport when there's other airports in the state like Salem and, which is what we have kind of wondered about as well. So they have asked Century West to come back and provide them another report at their October 3rd meeting. So that discussion will be interesting because the Oregon Department of Aviation Board is the one that will approve the master plan once it is developed and revised, the new master plan. And those, that kind of takes care of my representative meetings that I've attended. I will have that PAC meeting coming up in October. But I did want to talk about Shred Day because that is another one of my favorite days. And that is also going to be on Saturday, October the 5th, from 9:00 to 2:00, and it is right here in the parking lot of City Hall. And it is, we're partnering with Shred Northwest to provide this, and we do it annually for residents and small businesses at no charge. Proof of residency is required, and you're invited to drop off your sensitive paper documents for secure onsite shredding and in lieu of a fee, if you could bring cash or check donations to the Wilsonville Community Sharing. That would, that, that's the only requirement. So it's a good way to get rid of your old tax documents and checkbooks and those kinds of things.
Thank you. Councillor Dunwell, finally, sorry.
So should I go short or long?
Take your time.
So just before we get
So just before we get started, I do want to call something out because I don't know if you know, by the way, it's so fun to see everybody here again, so keep coming, please. And, you know, we, there was a conversation a bit earlier from councillor Linville about the fact that the, all the heavy lifting goes on in the work sessions. And, and it does. And no one was there again tonight. So if you really are interested in Wilsonville and where we're going as a city, golly, attend those work sessions or watch them on YouTube after because you can really see us asking, probing questions and disagreeing and, and going back and forth. It's really important. But I do want to just call out one more thing before I get to my really quick updates. I don't know if you noticed, but when councillor Linville, and I'm going to just kind of provide some information that I didn't know before I came to council, when she was giving her update, she was not only speaking to you, but she was speaking to all of us, and we were looking at her while she was talking. And here's why. Because, you know, there's, there's, you know, in a city when you've got, you know, healthy discord and healthy conversations, sometimes it can go to the other side and people can kind of go, oh, you know, they're, they're corrupt, or there's, you know, some swords get thrown, or they're making these decisions without our knowledge. Did you know that we can't talk to each other when there's more than two of us together? Because it's then an open public meeting, and our city attorney makes sure that we hold to that. We also can't go around, and I can't talk to this councillor, then that councillor, then that councillor, because that's called a serial conversation. So we are held to a very high standard as councillors. So when we hear some of these updates, like councillor Linville just gave us, those are news to us because either she could, you know, she could possibly share those in an email, but typically those happen at these meetings. And that's what's so really cool about the council and something I didn't know before I was, became an elected official, is that we do that to protect all of you as citizens, to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to support the future of this city and to make sure that we're representing all of you rather than, say, you know, someone else. So we, we do continually have conversations with different members. If I have a question, just like you can, I will call the city attorney, or I will call the planning director, or whatever. They all have phone numbers, and you can reach out to all of them or email them, and they will follow up. So I encourage everybody to come to our work sessions. I'd actually like to see more people at the work sessions and fewer people at council. Or leaving right after you give your public comments, because those are always really fun. So just a thought. So please, please do attend if you're going to come and take the time on a Monday night, spend just a little more time and come a little bit earlier and listen to some of the heavy lifting that goes on. I actually attended the, the emergency awareness event. There was, what's his name, Rough and Ready?
Yes.
Yeah, Rough and Ready, the dog was there. But I took away some information about preparing for earthquakes and also some really great information from the Red Cross. And there were a lot of folks there. One of the fun things about election season is I saw the candidates there, too. But that's, that's what they're supposed to do, right? So, but there was, TVFR was there, and different city departments were there, and then other outside departments out of the city. I would recommend that if you see that happening again next year, be sure to go. Take your kids there, take away some information, because, boy, they were ready to answer all sorts of questions because we live in an earthquake zone, folks. And then finally, in Wednesday night, right about the same time or right afterwards, the ODOT Open House, and the Boone Bridge Open House, I think that's at 5:30, and then at 6:30, there is going to be a reception for our local artist, Tony Avery. And if you look outside in the corridor, right outside, right outside council chambers, there are these absolutely amazing paintings. And they're going to be up through Tuesday, November 12th. And so that's a really cool part about City Hall, is we actually represent the local artists, and we actually have this great gallery now. But there will be a reception for her on Wednesday, September 18th, from 6:30 to 7:30. So we'd love to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. That brings us to our consent agenda. And will the attorney, before you read that, would you please describe the reason we put things on consent, our parliamentarian?
So consent agenda items are items that are in the council packet but don't necessarily warrant a full presentation. They are items that can be discussed at work session prior to the council meeting or have been briefed with council at a prior work session. And council always has the opportunity to pull anything off the consent agenda if they want a full discussion in the meeting about it.
Thank you. Will you please read the consent agenda by title?
Resolution number 3177, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville amending the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wilsonville, Twelton Valley Water District, and the Willamette Water Supply Commission for the Raw Water Facilities Project and minutes of the July 15, 2024 City Council Meeting.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been read. Or may I have a motion? For the consent agenda is read.
I can make that motion, your honor. I move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
I'll second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 4-0. That brings us to continuing business, and this is ordinance number 893. Will the city attorney please read the title?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 893, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville, adding sections 2.380 through 2.386 to the Wilsonville Code concerning the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Thank you. I call to order the Wilsonville City Council's second reading on ordinance number 893, as has been read. Does any member of the council have any questions for staff or the city attorney on ordinance number 893?
I do not.
And we had a long report at our, a long discussion at the first reading, and we had a hearing at the first reading. Okay, hearing, no further questions. Do I have a motion on ordinance number 893?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion, mayor. I make a motion to approve ordinance number 893 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville, adding sections 2.380 through 2.386 to the Wilsonville Code concerning the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that we enact ordinance number 893. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, well, I will just recap very briefly our, the reason for this. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee was started, as we described at the last meeting, by really an organic movement, I guess I would say, interest from people in the community that came forth, wanted to do something, wanted, wanted to be, have the city be more inclusive for various reasons. And in working with the city manager and answering all these questions and holding meetings, we actually held a, a number of Zoom meetings with a lot of people and various steps, decided to form this committee. And you can read about the charter and the number of people who are on the committee online. They just had their fourth Juneteenth celebration. It had record attendance, and the costs of the event were sponsored, were covered by local businesses, the list of businesses that came forward and offered sponsorships. And then, as you just heard, they have a speech presentation coming up, a speaking presentation coming up this week. So is there any further discussion or remarks by any councillor before I call a vote? Councillor Dunwell?
Just a quick remark, in case anyone was not at the public hearing and is interested in the presentation and how we all step forward with different testimony from the public and also from councillors with feedback. It's, it was a healthy conversation, and I appreciated the public's input into that. But I will reiterate that I strongly support this. I do believe that Wilsonville can take diversity, equity, and inclusion and, and make sure that it really matters for the future of our city and all of our citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you. And this was an ad hoc committee. This ordinance makes it a standing committee. So hearing no further discussion or commentary, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. Those in favor of adoption of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye. Those opposed will answer no. Those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the roll.
Councillor Linville?
Aye.
Councillor President Akarol?
Aye.
Councillor Dunwell?
Aye.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Aye. The mash, the motion passes 4 to 0. Closing the hearing.
There's no hearing.
No, that's right. It's been going on too long. That brings us to city managers' business.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Okay, legal business.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:06.